Evening, everybody. I'll call to order the August 13th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, we look like we are missing Ann. I'll appoint Mr. D to vote for Ann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Verani is here, and that puts us at a quorum, Mr. Rug.
We've got eight voting members, sir.
Fantastic. Do we have any minutes to review?
Some came out late afternoon. I haven't even looked at them.
I have not had a chance.
We'll hold off on those until next month. That's fine. Regional impact determinations. Kelly?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Alrighty. In discussion with town staff, I have one item here, the Code of Ethics from Town Manager Mulholland. Mr. Mulholland, welcome. It's nice to see you at the Planning Board.
Thank you, sir. So, as you know, there's a, well, you may know, may not know, we are undergoing a process to update the Code of Ethics for the town, and that is going to be an elongated process. We're sending it out to every board and committee to provide feedback to staff. There's also public engagement sessions that will occur for the general public to provide feedback before it actually goes to the council again, and then they make whatever final revisions they choose to make. And at that time, there'll be a public hearing, so it's a very elongated process, but there's no real hurry to go and do this. Let's do it right. So, we're asking for feedback for every board and committee if they wish to provide it. If they don't, that's fine, too, but we're giving them the opportunity to do that. Obviously, you have your, have some quasi judicial functions that you perform here, so it's an issue, obviously, in planning boards, certainly ZBAs and other boards. The advisory boards, it's less of an issue, but certainly on these boards, ethics is rather important. So, I wanted to get that feedback from you, to the extent that you have any. If you don't have any tonight, that's fine, as long as we get it by the end of the process, which is like the end of September, before we get it back to the council, that would be helpful. But I'm here if you have any questions about any of the items that are in here on the draft that you'd like to discuss.
All right. Anything from the board, Mr. Rug?
Just a quick, general question. How do you see it different from what we have right now? Do you see definite improvement? Tightening things up?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't think what you had is bad, but this is, this covers sections that weren't there before. It talks about the electionary issues, especially when it comes to public employees and how they should be acting. It covers issues of so-called gifts. If you have a death in the family and somebody sends flowers to you, technically, you can't, you can't receive those because that would be considered a gift, so it has a dollar amount, something less than $50, because that's, most people would do that sort of thing. And most people are not going to do that to convince Art Rug to vote for their proposal. You know, so, and there's some language here that covers that, as long as that gift is not intended to influence your decision-making process, that allows an appropriateness to do that.
Very good.
Wonderful. Anything else from the board? I would ask that if the board could review this, and if we could have, if you could have any questions over to Kelly for Mr. Mulholland by the September 10th meeting, so that's our second meeting of next month, if we could have all that over to her, so that way she has time to review it and give it to the TM before his end-of-the-month deadline that he's asking on.
Is that too long? Is that, is that too long?
No, that's fine. There's plenty, and even after that, there'll be public hearings after that, so this is going to be an elongated process.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Wonderful. Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mulholland. Anything else?
Nothing this evening.
Kelly?
All set, Mr. Chair.
Anything? Wonderful. All right. Moving on. We are going to old business. We have a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan to construct two commercial buildings totaling 3,200 square feet and 7,500 square feet, along with associated site improvements located at 59 Rockingham Road, map 13, lot 60-3, Zone C2. Rockingham Road Holdings LLC is the owner. Free Stone Holdings LLC is the applicant, continued from May 7th, June 11th, and lastly, July 9th, 2025. Good evening, gentlemen. How we doing?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can just kind of recap.
Absolutely.
As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this was, this was accepted as complete back on May 7th. It was continued to June 11th, and then on June 9th is when the applicant and his engineer returned back to the board, mainly to act on those couple of waivers. What had occurred, though, is that the plans had been submitted prior to that meeting. We didn't have an opportunity to review that, those plans. We've since had an opportunity to review those. Staff is recommending conditional approval this evening. I think it just needs a conditional use permit that's, that needs to be acted upon by the board. So, I think that'll summarize it. Earl?
I have a, well, the only thing is conditional use is for the, I believe it's for wet ones that are over half an acre, and none of these are. So, I didn't think we were in that.
Correct.
Need of.
Okay. So, that's not required, then, you're saying?
We learned through the, through the reviews that it was less than.
There you go. So, this evening, staff is comfortable with conditional approval of the plan this evening. Thank you.
So, just understand, we do not have a CUP that we need to act on based off of square footage.
Correct. I know it states it on the agenda, but through the series of continuances, we learned that it's not applicable in this case.
Sure. Okay. Fantastic. Before the board discusses here, we'll give you folks the floor for a little bit. Give us a refresh, refresh of where we are, and we'll go from there.
Sure. I think a couple of meetings ago, we had the discussion about the fire truck access. So, we did go back to the drawing board, found that we can adjust, so we've changed the location of the loading docks in the big building and widened the pavement and showed that even with a tractor trailer at the loading dock, the fire truck can go to the either side and turn around. That triggered changes to the drainage and to some of the other reports, which forced us to extend for another five weeks to give the town and stentake the opportunity to review the plan. So, at this point, they've reviewed the updated plans. They got back to us with a list of issues. We've gone through all those issues, and we believe that everything is, at this point, addressed. So, we're ready for the conditional approval.
All right. So, what we will do is I will, and ask town staff if they have anything else they want to input. We'll come to the board for comment. I'm going to open it up to a public hearing. We'll close it, and then we'll come back.
I do have, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
There were items, they're mostly like, this note needs to be changed. They weren't significant. I've written my own response to each one, whether you want it presented now or whatever, but that's, we, the main conclusion is there was nothing that really changed the technical aspect of this. It was just some typos and making sure the stormwater.
You have it all.
Yeah.
It's in your materials.
I would, I believe.
You're ready for conditional approval, Earl?
Yes. Yes. There's nothing that's earth-shaking or.
Sure.
Or contentious or anything at this point.
Sure. All right. I will start with staff.
I have nothing more to add.
Thank you. Kelly?
All set, Mr. Chair.
All right. I will bring it to the board. Jason?
Yeah, I'd just like to, again, thank you for taking into consideration the conversation we had. I know it extended everything and made it a little bit more complicated, but again, I want to thank you for taking that into consideration.
Anything else from the board? All right. I will open up public comment. Public comment. And I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. All right, board. We have some choices we need to make. I would be looking for a motion to conditionally approve this application.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
After fourth appearance here, I will make a motion to grant conditional approval of a site plan and conditional use permit to construct two commercial buildings totaling 3,200 square feet and 7,500 square feet, along with associated site improvements. 59 Rockingham Road, tax map 13, lot 60-3. This is Zone Commercial 2. Rockingham Road Holdings LLC, and then Soyevich. Soyevich. Pronunciation. Is the owner, and Free Stone Holdings LLC is the applicant. This was last revised February 5th, 2025, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of approval and prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled, as noted in the engineering memo.
I have a motion for Mr. Rug. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second from Mr. Wiles. All in favor via roll call vote, starting with, go ahead.
Me?
Good luck. Yeah. I'm so used to saying Ann, it just threw everything off.
Aye.
Johnny? Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Nite, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative thing.
For the record, he's not a voting member, is he?
Oh.
No.
Yeah.
But that's my name.
No, I know. Trust me, I know. It just, I'm so used to looking and seeing Ann. It really messed me up.
It's Ryan in front of that Ann.
Steve is the same way as well.
Same with.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's good to know what you think.
So, all right.
Playing for the record.
Gentlemen, your application has been granted. Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the effort put in. I know that the board had some, some pretty in-depth conversation about your plan, and I appreciate your due diligence.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Moving on. We have a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit for 2,105 square feet of temporary wetland impacts and 9,704 square feet of permanent wetland buffer impacts for equipment access and work pad placement associated with the proposed structure replacements located within the Conservation Overlay District for the 380 transmission line in the areas of High Range Road and Mayflower Drive. This is Zone AR1. Kurt Nelson is the applicant. Public Service Company of New Hampshire, also known as Eversource, is the owner. Before we get started, I will, I will look for completeness on this. It does not look like there are any outstanding checklist items. I would accept a motion to accept the application as complete for staff's recommendation memorandum dated August 13th, 2025.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Motion from Mr. Rug.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second from Mr. Wiles. A roll call vote, starting with Mr. Verani.
Roll call vote?
That's what we've been doing, yeah.
I've been messed up with you not calling in.
I'm telling you. It's messed everything up tonight.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Nite, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. This has been accepted as complete. Before we give you the floor, does the board have anything? Does staff have anything they'd like to add? Good?
Just a note, Mr. Chair, that this was at ConsCom last evening, and they provided a favorable recommendation.
Fantastic. All right, folks, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you so much. So, I'm Lindsay White. I work for GZA Geo-Environmental and here with Kurt Nelson with Eversource. We are here this evening for a conditional use permit for upcoming maintenance work along the existing 380 transmission line. This is very consistent with other pole replacement and maintenance projects that have been before you recently from Eversource, so we'll keep this pretty brief. The work associated with this project will be done in accordance with the New Hampshire DES Best Management Practices Manual for utility maintenance in and adjacent to wetlands and water bodies. The project includes a, the replacement of two utility poles in the town of Londonary. Both are located off of Mayflower Drive, as it's seen on the, the plans on the screen. And this is replacement of existing wood poles with steel equivalent poles. The work is proposed to begin this fall, 2025, and be completed mid-April, 2026. And the work does require temporary wetland impacts within the Conservation Overlay District for access to the poles and for constructing a safe workpad area around the poles for construction equipment and vehicles during that time. And where access and workpads are located within wetlands, Eversource utilizes temporary timber matting to create a surface between the resources and construction equipment. Once the work is completed, Eversource will move the timber matting, and temporarily impacted wetlands will be stabilized with a seedless mulch and monitored for stabilization. So, again, this is replacement of existing poles, just maintenance of the utility line, no installation of additional infrastructure, and not widening of the right-of-way. So, that, that's really the overview summary of what we're doing.
Fantastic. All right. I will, before I come to the board, I'll start with staff. I know you said you're all set. I'm sure you're still all set. All right. Board. Fantastic. Seems like this is.
We've seen several of these before.
It's the same old, same old.
Pretty standard. What you've been doing for a while now, so.
Yep. Yeah.
Wonderful.
I'll just add a few words. Yeah, just, again, continuance of what we call asset condition replacement, structure work. You've seen us do this many times. I'm sure the question gets raised, why don't you just replace them all? We do have to follow inspection protocols. There's been, Eversource's program is to look for opportunity structures where there's savings to be had, if we're, especially for doing lots of matting, you know, makes sense to change a structure next to it if that's going to have to be replaced two, three years down the road, that sort of thing. So, there's been a lot of pressure recently on Eversource by New Hampshire Office of Consumer Affairs, where we've proposed to do full-line rebuilds, and there's been a lot of scrutiny on the company. Lately, people participating in the ISO New England approval process and sort of giving us feedback that we should be doing the bare minimum, you know, that we shouldn't be going above and beyond. So, we appreciate the town's patience and us constantly coming back for the onesies and twosies. Our review process now is, there's more scrutiny on us in terms where we might look to do a few more opportunity structures now. We're trying to be as prudent as possible in light of the, the pressure on us with respect to cost considerations, even though when you look at long-term costs, there's a saving. So, just want to give you guys the context, since you see us so many times.
Yeah. Absolutely. I'm sure this won't be the last one.
No, it won't be. Not at all. Absolutely.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah. Oh, you're quite welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to public. Public have any comment? And I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Looks like we have a conditional use permit to look at.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do you entertain a motion, sir?
I would.
Okay. I will move that we approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit to allow 2,105 square feet of temporary wetland impacts and 9,704 square feet of permanent wetland buffer impacts for equipment access and workpad replace, workpad placement associated with the proposed structure replacements located within the Conservation Overlay District for the 380 transmission line in the area of High Range Road and Mayflower Drive. This is Zone Agricultural Residential 1. Kurt Nelson is the applicant and Public Service Company of New Hampshire. Eversource is the owner in accordance with the CUP application prepared by GZA Geo-Environmental Incorporated dated July 15th, 2025.
A motion from Mr. Rug. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second from Lynn. All in favor, starting with Giovanni, please.
Giovanni Verani, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Jeff Penta, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Jason Nite, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. The CUP has been granted. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Not a problem. All right. Moving on here. We are getting into other business. We have the Master Plan Steering Committee update. Good evening, Sylvia. Nice to see you.
Good evening. Good to see everyone again. A lot has happened in the last 14 months. When we started, I'm supposed to. Clicker.
Oh, right here.
Oh, yeah. So, 14 months ago, we started this process, and at that time, I was sitting in that seat and being your town planner as Kelly was on her way. Now, she has a one-year-old, so that's exciting right there, right? So, we have a new planner on the way. But let's just go right into this, and I appreciate everyone's time. So, let's talk about what we've done. I'm here tonight with Zach Swick, our GIS analyst and data guru in general. And so, tonight, we're going to talk about the master plan. And for our home viewers, I know this group is probably very well-aware of the purpose and process of a master plan, but for our home viewers, we'll just do a quick overview. We also will talk about the community outreach, what we heard from the community, the guiding principles that were developed, and the draft vision. Zach will then go into the key demographics. He'll also cover the land use patterns and housing trends, and then it'll come back to me for proposed strategies for land use and housing. And just to recognize, those are a couple of the toughest. Probably, if there are controversial chapters in a master plan, those are typically them. So, we've, I think, it's. those are typically them. So we've, uh, I think, uh, it's, we're pretty excited about having gone through this process and having some good land use and housing strategies. Then we'll talk about, um, Planning Board and have you provide some feedback, and, um, then we'll talk about next steps. Alright, so the, um, next, the next steps, uh, sorry, purpose and process. Uh, first, let's talk about the Steering Committee. Um, a year ago, this group decided, let's get a Steering Committee together. Um, this was just as Kelly was getting ready to go on maternity leave, and so you can see some of our representatives. Um, a couple from this Board, as well as Conservation Commission, the Recreation Commission, Town Council, Heritage and Historic District Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Utility Committee, and of course, the Planning Board. Um, so, all those, that whole team becoming our Master Plan Subcommittee has provided a lot of great input. And why is the Master Plan Update important? Well, first, it's a requirement under New Hampshire RSA. It also sets, uh, long-term vision and priorities for land use, housing, infrastructure, and growth. It's a fundamental, um, document for the community. It guides zoning updates and future planning efforts. It's basically a tool which the community can use, and it reflects the community values and Planning Board leadership. So the process to date has been that first, this Planning Board a year ago, um, initiated the process, seeing that their own, um, master plan was over 10 years old. Uh, the, the Steering Committee was formed, as I've reviewed, and then, uh, the work, um, between the Steering Committee, Town Staff, Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, and of course, residents have been involved. So let's talk really briefly about what we heard and the, um, community outreach that was done. So we created this survey, um, and that was, of course, an organized effort between the Steering Committee and the staff and our, our team at Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And we got just under 1,400 survey responses. Some of the outreach we did, you can see that first top picture, that was from Old Home Day. Uh, we also were present at the elections. We did a presentation at the Senior Center. We had tables at the library here at the town offices. We also had, um, a presence on the website. We have our own webpage, and it can be found for our home viewers. If you go to the town website and look for the Master Plan Steering Committee, you'll find the master plan website. Um, we also did quite a bit, uh, thanks to the Steering Committee, on social media and a lot of Facebook work. Um, and residents shared priorities on quality of life here in Londonderry, regional concerns, land use, housing, and growth. Um, just to give you a quick snapshot on, uh, the who participated compared to the population in Londonderry, you can see in blue there, um, is the population, and, uh, in orange on the right is the survey participation. Um, the first category, 20 and under, that's probably not a surprise to anyone, but you can see we had a good response from each category, with the most being the 45 to 64, but we are pretty happy with this response. Um, let's talk about some key land use themes that we received feedback on. First, people were very vocal that Londonderry is a welcoming and livable community. They're very interested in preserving wooded areas and maintaining the town's rural character. They care about creating walkable neighborhoods and allowing mixed-use development in around the airport. Um, promoting a vibrant mixed-use village center was, um, provided quite a bit of feedback on that. And then incorporating onsite amenities such as playgrounds and multi-use trails in new residential developments to reduce demand on town facilities. Um, feedback on areas that they would like, uh, Town Staff and Town Boards to consider is consideration on community character and culture, preservation on open space, balanced growth, and, uh, regulatory concerns, discussed affordability, and varied housing choices. Infrastructure concerns, um, there's definitely resistance to high-density housing, um, concerns about traffic and safety, and talk about walkability. When we looked at housing themes, what came out was that there were really no standouts to preferred housing types. So as an example, single-family homes were the most supported, but only by 55% saying they were very needed. That was an emphasis by, um, Mother Nature. Thank you for laughing. And, uh, so, very needed, or needed at 20%, um, oh, sorry, 55% at very needed and needed, and 20% at not wanted and not needed. The next categories were ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and housing for all ages, which were also supported, um, but not by a huge, uh, majority there, 41 to 36% with 33 and 31% saying it was not wanted and not needed. So it was a very even spread there. Allow for, um, other themes that came up in housing was to allow for a variety of housing, um, for a wide range of income levels. Um, common suggestion to create more affordable housing was to allow for small homes on small lots. There were growth concerns and general dissatisfaction with PUDs and planned unit developments and multifamily, with 56 and 61% not wanting it and not needing it. Um, for housing, what was suggested for Town Staff and Town Boards to consider preservation of small-town character, balanced development, and allowing for a variety of housing, affordable housing again, um, opposition to overdevelopment, traffic and infrastructure needs, um, taxation and financial burdens, impact on schools and community services, and community amenities. So, the Master Plan Steering Committee, along with staff and our team, um, took that input and started with, um, looking at guiding principles and a draft vision statement. So the, the Master Plan Steering Committee came up with these seven guiding principles. Balance residential and commercial development with responsible growth. Promote efficient municipal services and high-quality infrastructure with consideration for future needs. Invest in cultural heritage, historical heritage, and community engagement for all ages and abilities. Support environmental stewardship. Establish policies and objectives that encourage a variety of housing choices. Create community transportation connections from walking to riding to driving, and value education and family-friendly environment. This all started then working on the vision, and the Master Plan Steering Committee, again, in a workshop format, felt that the vision needed to be aspirational, include responsible spending, move away from the small-town feel to a community that had all modern-day conveniences, highlighted environmental stewardship and New Hampshire's unique characteristics, and acknowledged the excellent quality of service provided by the town. So here is the draft vision. Londonderry values its unique character, agricultural heritage, and natural beauty while embracing responsible growth and modern conveniences. Residents and town officials are committed to maintaining a high quality of life while ensuring fiscal responsibility through sound investments in infrastructure, town services, and community programs. As good environmental stewards, Londonderry fosters development while preserving its distinctive New Hampshire identity, natural resources, and ensures a thriving, inclusive community for generations to come. Any questions so far from the Board? Okay, let's move it to Zach, who will take it to the next steps.
Okay, so I'm going to just highlight a number of different, uh, facts and figures, just to give us an idea of where we are. So key demographic trends. I like to take the long view. So this is Londonderry's population over time, going back from 1850 to 2020. And you can see that for about 100 years there...
Bless you.
Londonderry didn't grow, uh, actually probably shrunk a little bit, and that's very common for this area, uh, because mills opened up and, uh, people went out west where there was actual topsoil to farm. Uh, but you can see there in 1993, uh, the, I'm sorry, in 1960, I-93 opens, and there was then an explosive growth, and so between 1960 and 2000, Londonderry's population grew by 21% annually. So every year, it was growing by 21%. Starts to slow down a little bit in the 90s and, uh, you know, but still growing. So this is Londonderry's population pyramid, where we have in blue, the male, and then red, the females, and then we have, you know, five-year age gra, uh, age bands, where each one makes up a percentage of the total population. You, you might be saying to yourself, Zach, that doesn't look like a pyramid, uh, and that's true. The, the reason is, historically, and then today, still in developing countries, there's usually many kids at the bottom, and then as you move up, it gets smaller and smaller. Here, we can see that that's not the case. You have, you know, uh, it's skinny at the bottom, then there's a bump out around, uh, you know, 10 to 19, and then it drops again as people move away in their 20s. And then it comes back a little bit as people move back in the region, have families, and then we have that big, uh, that big wave there that's demograph, uh, demographers called the Silver Tsunami, which is that wave of baby boomers entering into, uh, you know, the last ages of their lives. And so, and I also note that this is from 2020, so this is five years old now at this point, and I would expect that whole wave to actually have moved another, you know, band there towards the 80s. Here we have minors per household. On the left is 1980, and on the right is 2020. Here we can see Londonderry, the SHPC region, and New Hampshire. So in, you know, in 1980, Londonderry had about 1.1 minors per household. Today, it's about 0.6, so, you know, the rate has dropped a lot. Uh, it's still higher than the SHPC region and New Hampshire as a whole, but there's been a steep decline over that period. Oh, I should also comment, if anyone has any questions, please ask now, and not wait till the end one, because I'm, if you were me, I'd forget. Here we have Londonderry public school enrollment, going back to, uh, a decade. Let's see, it's fallen from around 4,400 to now, it's about less than, uh, 3,000, it was in 900. Okay, so now, cover some of the land use patterns. So this is the zoning district allotment comparison. So on, we have the zoning district, then we have the number of acres, and then we have the percentage of the total land in Londonderry. We see by far the largest zoning district is agricultural residential. Uh, multifamily makes up just 1.4%. Uh, commercial is about 5%. You know, industrial is 12%. Londonderry does have a fair amount of industry, which most people won't, probably wouldn't know, but, uh, you have a fair amount of commercial and, uh, industrial, and then the gateway business district. But that's just zoning. What's the actual land use look like? So this is the land use type, the current land use type as of, uh, let's see, earlier this year. You have the type, the acres, and, uh, as a total percentage of land. And you can see that by, you know, the plurality is so, uh, single-family residential, making up 41% of the, uh, total area. Multifamily residential makes up 3.3%, and then, you know, commercial, industrial, airport. I was a little surprised the airport was as low as it is. Civic and institutional, that'd be like what the building we're sitting in right now. Uh, 14% is open recreational space, and 14.8% is classified as vacant land. Now, some of that is, uh, it can be in any number of things. It can be an unbuildable lot. It could be, in some cases, uh, uh, utilities right-of-way, so, or it could just be, uh, you know, woods that has not been developed. A little hard to see here, but on the left is, again, the current land use, and I'll describe it because it is so small, but the, all the yellow that you see there is single-family residential, currently, single residential family. Uh, the multifamily is in brown. Uh, commercial is kind of a pink salmon. Uh, the green is the open space and recreational space, so you can see much squash over there. Doing a nice job conserving a long, uh, a large, continuous piece of, uh, conservation area. And then the, uh, in purple is the vacant land, so you can see it's gonna scattered all around, uh, the town, but most of it north of, uh, 102.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
So, so vacant land, is that, that's land owned by others? Or owned by private individuals other than the town?
It's, uh, yes, so, 'cause in this case...
Other than the town?
Other than the town. Because in the, in this analysis, the town would fall under institutionally, because, even though, if, unless it's used for open space.
It would be open space and recreation, correct?
Yeah, yeah. If it's being used for that.
I guess I would follow up with another question.
Mm-hmm.
What is agricultural use versus the single-family?
Agricultural means it's being used as a farm. It's agricultural use. Now, there's a caveat with that, is that if the, the way the, uh, the way the assessing data works, that if you have a house on your farm, it's gonna show up as single-family. It doesn't differentiate between, uh, you know, hey, you, it's a single-family, and this is farming over here. That, if it's labeled as agricultural, that means it's only, that parcel is only for agricultural use. There is no, uh, improved...
Oh, so that's why it's so low.
Yeah. So this is miss, all the hobby farms, that sort of stuff, that's missing from that.
Well, but if you have, if you have a 50-acre farm...
Mm-hmm.
With a house on it, it's residential...
Yeah.
That 50 acres goes into residential...
Yep.
Not agricultural.
Yep.
Thank you.
The way the assessing data works, they're interested in the house. They're not really interested in, in the farm itself. On the right there is, uh, you can see a map with two colors. The black is all the land use, land cover that was disturbed or developed in 2013. I picked that year because that's the year of your previous, uh, master plan. And then, anything newly disturbed or developed within that time period up to 2023 is in red. So you can see out by the airport in the northwest corner, all around Pettingill Road, all that. You can also see, uh, Woodmont Commons. Is that red there, over, uh, kind of in the middle on the right?
Sorry, can I go back to the previous slide? So...
Uh, go back.
Table 16, yeah, so... There's a, there's a better-than-average chance. See the hesitation? When I try to be nice, it really confuses me. The, the, there's a huge chance that this data is gonna be misinterpreted. And so, if I were writing this document, I would put a disclaimer on it with some kind of an explanation that, that says that. Because there, there could be, there will be, there probably will be, some people that are gonna twist this data for their own gain, whatever that gain happens to be. With, if you, if you put an explanation in, there's less of a chance that it could be misinterpreted.
That's fair.
And that example that we just gave of the 50 acres, a 50-acre farm, 100-acre farm, a 200-acre farm with one house on it... Is gonna be credited... is going to be credited towards single-family residential, not agricultural. And I think that's, that's a huge paradigm shift, right? In a town like Londonderry that has that. And in fact, if we use Max Apples as a, as an example, there are several single-family homes in amongst all that acreage. And I would, I would say that, I don't even know how, it had to be subdivided land that showed up in the 773 acres, because I don't know a farm that, in Londonderry, doesn't have a house on it.
Right.
Yeah, Sunny Crest does one. So that would be another.
That's what I'm saying, so-
Yeah, exactly.
I can add to that.
Now, now, what we learned in a couple of meetings ago, Max Apples, they have several subdivided parcels of, different parcels of land that don't have a house on it, which I'm sure is part of the 773 acres. My long-winded, short story is, clearly, Londonderry has more than 773 acres of agricultural land in the town. There's no question. And so, people need to know why it's only saying 773.
Okay.
So I'm, and I'm offering that as a suggestion, obviously. I'm not on the committee, I'm not-
No, I think that's a valid suggestion. We also look at, it's not in any of the, not in any of the documents tonight, but we also look at land cover. So we do say, break it down by, okay, how much of it is actually pasture? How much of it is, you know, crop cover? How much is orchards? So there are other ways that we try to capture that within the data. We just can't capture that from the zoning data alone.
Yeah, and I mean, so-
Let me just ask you a clarifying question. So we received a report that was actually, that was reviewed by the steering committee. Is these clarifications, do those reside in that report?
You're talking about the different types of data?
Nope. What I'm talking about is the actual report that's going to eventually, hopefully, go to a public hearing that was presented to this board two weeks ago, and that we should all read. That should have, all, that should have included more information there, as well as the appendix and stuff like that.
You mean the demographics chapter where we specifically went through and placed the-
I just want to see if there is missing information that is actually in the, in the actual physical report, rather than this, you know, high-level presentation, which is good, by the way. I just want to kind of-
I, I don't remember.
Well, the, what you saw at the last master plan steering committee is already on the website, and that is an appendix to the first chapters. And that is an explanation of the data and the various sources. It isn't an explanation of what Tony's talking about now.
So this chart that we're looking at, that's up on the screen right now, is not in the report?
I believe it is in the report.
Sorry?
I believe it is in the report.
It is in the report.
It is, but the defining each-
Definition of each-
Is not, my recollection.
This caveat that, that we've just been talking about the last five minutes, we can provide that in there. We will, we've taken note of this.
Another clarifying question. With vacant land, is that the same situation where if you have 50 acres, it's vacant, but there's a house up front on one acre?
No. So the vacant land has no improvements on it. So that would be no house or anything like that.
So it's a parcel that has zero improvement to it?
Yes. Or in some cases, the quarry up in the northeast part of town is classified as vacant in the zoning data, or in the, yes.
Southwest part of town.
Not northeast, the-
He's talking the one on Auburn.
You're talking, well, yeah. We'll call off, pick one.
Yeah, we'll call it.
Yeah, so that was for, because it doesn't have anything, it's of value to assessing, is listed as vacant.
So it's considered vacant?
So I think it is important to just call that out, all these terminologies or definitions that support the number of acreage. Because, I mean, to say, the muskwash had one house on it, and it was on 3,000 acres or something to that effect, it would be considered agriculture, single-family residential?
No, if that, because I, because I have a separate data set from that of conservation lands that comes from the state and from the town, so I can account for that. So easement, if you have an, if you have 50 acres and your house is on there and you have an easement, it's classified as conservation. Because I have additional data to be able to make that distinction.
So we're looking for definitions, I think, is what we're looking for. It's definitions to each land use type for clarification would be what the board's looking for.
Okay.
Anybody else? Moving on.
Were we on this, or did we pass this?
Just finish that.
You would be at key housing trends.
Okay, key housing trends, moving on. Here we have a breakdown of the makeup of Londonderry's housing stock. So here we have Londonderry at the top, then we have single-family detached, single-family attached, that'd be like a town home. Two units, three or more units, five or more units, manufactured or other. Other is like camper. And so for all these, you can see that, you know, 69% of Londonderry's housing units are single-family detached, 13 are attached. And then, you know, we have small numbers of two and three units, and then 12, 12% of all units are in structures that have five or more units. And then there are some of the surrounding towns, compare that to, like, Auburn has very, very few non-single-family. Bedford has a mix. Most people probably wouldn't know that, but there is, you know, a fair number of multifamily in Bedford. Same with Derry. Manchester, not surprisingly, it's about, you know, a third, single-family detached, a third, five or more units.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so, so you mentioned like, single-family attached as townhouse. Would that also be duplex?
Yes.
Okay. And so if it's town-
Or, or the definition is-
Two units.
Yeah. That'd be two units?
Yeah.
Okay, so like, for a single-family attached, if it's a townhouse, but there's, let's say, 40 townhouses in the development, are those all considered single-family attached, or are those-
Those are all considered, under the census, those are all considered single-family attached.
So if you have a development of 100 townhouses, those are all single-family attached?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just means that, the difference is, they don't have multiple, for the census concern, they don't have multiple units sharing border, sharing walls, or being one on top of each other.
So will ADUs then be two units? When we get done?
I don't think the census has figured that out yet.
That's your point, I would think so.
It would probably be two units, would be my guess.
That's what I would do.
The state data does it as two units.
Okay, that makes sense. The, you know, ultimately, it would come down, well, when this is, for the American Community Survey, it would depend on what, how the person responded for some of these, and how they're prompted. So they might say, I'm a single, oh, I have a single-family home, and they don't think about the-
That's a good point.
That said, with these, they typically do send somebody out into the field to talk them through it. So, so, don't know. And in New Hampshire, you can see that, you know, we do have a, you know, majority, unsurprisingly, single-family detached. But we do have, you know, 15% of all units are in buildings that have five or more units. Here we have a figure of Londonderry's annual building permits, 1990 to 2023. So the black line there is total units, and the blue line is units that are in a building with two or more units in the building. And keep in mind, these are housing, we're calculating the housing units, not the actual building permits themselves. So if you have a, you're building a duplex, it's not one permit, it's two housing units. You see that, there's a, we were building a lot of single-family homes there in the 90s, and then a little bit in the 2000s, and then financial crisis happens, and nobody's building anything for a number of years. And then it picks up again in 2014 with, you know, considerably more, less single-family home units. And you also see it kind of comes in waves. You know, there's a big, you know, structure, development comes through, they build it, and then the next year there's not anything, and then there's another development, and the next year there's nothing. I have 24, 2024 numbers, and they are significant. But I didn't have time, I didn't have them before I got this graph made. In 2024, by my count, 372 total units. So that'd be the most of any year so far were permitted. Of those 305 were in, in buildings with five or more units. The vast, as far as I can tell, the vast majority of those are the multifamily that was built over at Woodmont Commons. So you can think of, you know, just west of, I forget, the senior center, I can't remember the name. So, so a lot of this is just Woodmont Commons. And of 336 in general were in buildings of two or more units. Here we have Londonderry new home sales. This annually, and you can see that, you know, back in 1990, it was selling about 80 a year. And then that picks up in the 90s, when you're building new stuff, and then falls off with the recession, and then just never recovers. So, you know, now, you know, in 2020, I forget what year this goes to, 2023, I believe, you built, you know, a quarter of the units, new units, or you sold a quarter of the new units that you did in 1990. Okay, so this graph has got a lot going on here, but we're trying to compare housing costs and growth. So there, you'll see that there's actually four lines on the screen. Because when this, when this presentation was pasted, an error occurred, and we lost the legend for the red line. The red line is the Turner Construction Cost Index, which is, Turner Construction is an international construction firm. There are lots of building cost indexes out there, but most of them are behind paywalls. So this is the only one I had, or one of the only ones that I had at my fingertips. The, so the blue line is the Londonderry median purchase price. The green line is the Consumer Price Index, and the purple line is the Producer Price Index for single-family home construction materials. And all those are indexed at 2015 values at 100. That's to say, see how much they can grow compared to each other. You can see, we talked about inflation. You see that the Consumer Price Index increased by about 29% over that time period, while construction costs were considerably higher, and the median purchase price in Londonderry was even higher still. You know, grew by 84% over that, you know, less than a decade. Coming to the end of mine, so cost-burden households in Londonderry. A household is considered cost-burden, housing cost-burden, when they spend 30% or more of their income on housing, total housing cost. So, you know, rent, utilities, property taxes, all of it. So for all households in Londonderry, about three in 10 are housing cost-burdened. For those with a mortgage or those without a mortgage, it's about 25%, so one in four. For renters, it's a majority of renting households are cost-burdened, cost-burdened, housing cost-burdened. Thinking that a little bit differently, putting that in real numbers terms. In Londonderry, about 2,700 households are housing cost-burdened. A major, and again, a majority of renting households are cost-burdened. And I believe I have one slide left.
How does that compare with the state?
I don't remember, to be honest. For renting, my guess is probably a little higher than usual, but most places are housing cost, have high rates of housing cost burden. It varies town to town to some extent.
Sorry, I'm struggling with this one.
So, it went the wrong way.
So 25% of households with or without a mortgage?
Yeah.
25% each?
So just 25% of owner-occupied households, homeowners households are housing cost-burdened.
So, so whether you had a mortgage or not, 25% were still overburdened?
Correct.
How's that work?
My guess is, by the time you get to pay your mortgage off, you're retired. There's enough people retired, and now you're just income. Yeah, your costs are lower, but your income's also lower.
Got it. Thank you.
And think of Londonderry, at least I do, of, as a, you know, a community of homeowners. But it's important to remember that, you know, a lot of people do rent at Londonderry as well. One in six households in Londonderry rents, which was a number that surprised me. I believe that's the end of mine, if it-
All right, I have a couple others.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'm going on the wayback machine.
Where to?
Up a page. So just a general question on the surveying. How is, how do you, as, as a, I guess as a, I guess the question for Jeff as well. How do you anticipate, or should you anticipate, the needs of the people who aren't taking the survey? You know, is, what is it, 26,000 people in town, and you had 1,400 take a survey? And so, how, is there, is there a gauge? Or is there any way that you have to try and figure out what people really want? Because you have 24,500 people didn't take a, didn't take the survey.
Right.
25,500 did not take the survey. And you're trying to guess what they need? Is that a fair statement?
That's always difficult to do. You know, then that's the problem with doing a survey like this, it is not a scientific randomized survey. And we couldn't do that, just because that would be very, very expensive. And you do that sort of thing, then you can try to account for people response bias here. Here, we can't do that. But, so we have to do other venues to try to-
From Sylvia's standpoint, is, but you're, but are you, are you basing your summary analysis of what the town needs on the responses from 1,400 people?
So that is a very good question for the next portion of this.
Okay.
I actually have a question going back to the survey as well. On slide 12, the part that talks about very needed versus not needed, right?
Okay.
I think you're going the wrong way.
Oh, gosh.
Wrong way.
Sorry. Do something, Kelly, do something. Can you do something? I don't know how I got there.
You can just answer his question.
There you go, yeah. So, you know, in there it says 20% view single-family homes as not needed, not wanted, not needed. 33% view ADUs and housing fraulets as not wanted, not needed. Is there a way of knowing how many of those people just across the board were like, no, we don't want anything? You know, as opposed to being able to say, we do want this, not that? And it would just be interesting to know, like, what percentage of those people are like, no, I don't want to do anything?
On everything, yeah. I suppose we could do additional analysis on, on the survey. But there comes to be a point. I mean, really, the, the first bullet is what really stood out, was that there were no standouts for preferred housing.
I can tell you it's under 20%. Just looking at that, because they answered, 20% answered no on that. It had to be under 20.
Right, so 80% would have said, would have not responded that way. No, I was just, and you may not be able to tell at all, I don't know. I was just wondering, like, because I hear of all, I, I talk to people who are like, nope, everybody wants to be the last house built in town. So nope, nope, don't. So I'm, I was just wondering if that was, if, if that was like, in the data or anything like that.
It, it could be.
Okay, that's fine.
But let's go back to Tony, because I don't want to leave you hanging. So the master plan steering-
I can wait.
Okay.
A really good hanger.
Okay.
I have, because I have another question.
Am I on that slide, or should I move on and see if we answer your question?
The question is on what you just presented.
Oh, I keep doing that.
So key housing focus areas for town and staff boards. The first bullet is preservation of small-town character. Okay? Then you go down to- building the vision.
Yes, I know what you're gonna say.
I was thinking the same thing. The moment of community.
Am I on the wrong way?
Away from small town to a community that has all the modern day conveniences.
Right.
So, am I missing something or is that two different things?
That is two.
No, I tell you, and, and since we have so many folks here on the steering committee, um, plus Art was at, almost at every meeting. So there was a lot of discussion about the small-town feel. And, um, this is not the only town that wants to keep its community character or feel that they have a small town. But I believe, and correct me, Jeff and Jake and the rest who were, and of course Sean. What I heard from that discussion from the committee was, you know, we were a small town, but we did a lot of workshopping in that committee. And one of the things we did was we looked at the aerials of the building. And people really in that committee recognized, you know, it once was a small town, but we have to recognize all the building that has occurred. And so I think what they wanted to do was sort of recognize, maybe it's not such a small town. At least depending on where you are in the town, depending on what uh arterial you're driving, doesn't feel like a small town, doesn't feel like a small town over at Woodmont Commons or by the airport. But there are sections that do feel like small town. You drive up to Mac Apples and you feel, oh, we have this beautiful, you know, agricultural area. We have this farm, we have, it's just fantastic. And you go to the Old Home Day and you appreciate the parade and you do that and you feel like this is a hometown. But they wanted to recognize that it has changed, that it has modernized, that there, there, you know, we have wifi and we have modern day conveniences and all of that. And I think there was a lot of back and forth on that, I don't know, please.
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of the conversation was this will be taken the wrong way. Uh, a lot of the conversation was, you know, we, we enjoy the small-town feel, but the reality is Londonderry hasn't been a small town since a highway went through the middle of it. Um, and that was a conversation that was recognized at the master plan level that maybe we're using small town the wrong way. But, you know, the, the committee did recognize as a whole that Londonderry is not a small town and it has not been a small town for a very long time.
Yeah, and so, and so I would agree with both of the last things that were said. You, you, that number one bullet that says provision, preservation of small-town character, that ship sailed a long time ago. I came in in nineteen seventy eight, it was a small town.
It, it's, it's a matter of perception as well.
Hundred percent.
If, if you move up here from Quincy, you're in God's country.
I came here from Winter, Massachusetts, on two square miles with twenty seven thousand people, this is a small town, believe me.
But if you move, if you move down from Colas County, this is Boston. You know, like, so the perception of small town is entirely based on what, it's like traffic, you know?
I think we were trying to recognize that, like, you know, no, we're, we're not a small town, we are a growing community, but we do have, you know, these little small-town essences, the old homes days and the, the preserved areas throughout town and.
So for pre, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help with the presentation part of it. So where you have that dichotomy there, should they both be there or should one go away? Or do you need another, you need another splainer of why, why that dichotomy exists in, in different parts of, of, of your presentation or your booklet or whatever it's gonna be?
Well, that, when you look at the vision and that first sentence, I think you have that. You're, it, like I said, Londonderry values its unique character, its agricultural heritage and natural beauty, while embracing responsible growth and modern conveniences.
And I think that was, I, I, I'm trying to remember here, I believe that was the conversation was small-town and things like unique character and agriculture her- agricultural heritage were kind of being mixed together and we tried to delineate, you know, in respect to the unique character of the town, which people are calling small-town, while recognizing that not a small town.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm just trying to make this thing work.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And one of the things.
I think the verification, you know, for the general public.
And one of the things I had brought up in that meeting is, that's one of the great things about this town. You can live in different parts of this town and have a completely different experience and, and how, you know, if you want, you want the Woodmont feel, you can live there. If you wanna live on a small road where you don't really see a lot of traffic going by, you can do that. And that's the great part about this town. But to try to cookie cutter blanket describe Londonderry and say all of Londonderry should go this way or that way, is not really easy to do. So that displays in here, it also displays in the wants and needs of the residents here because they do have diverse wants and some of them conflict, but that also reflects the diverse community. This is as far as how it's structured in the different parts.
I do think that, um, slide sixteen though, prob- if whatever deck is going out in the public. I, slide sixteen seventeen, you know, essentially what you're doing with slide sixteen is you're explaining what we, what the steering committee talked about. Slide seventeen is the result of that conversation. If the intent was to demonstrate to the public and demonstrate to the community the actions that we took, you know, you, I would avoid what exactly we, what exactly that is, you know, kind of we're talking about, because that, the result of those conversations was the draft vision. I would more or less say the MPCSC workshop this, et cetera, et cetera, spent, you know, um, X amount of hours and discussions and, and such like that to demonstrate that, rather than have words that could be, that, you know, as Tony has demonstrated, conflict with that, your neck, with our next slide there, so.
Is it the header that's a problem? Because I'm looking at, the header that I'm looking at on, I guess it's thirteen, says key housing focus areas for town staff and boards. Key, you're telling the, the town staff and boards that the key housing focus is preservation of small-town character, right? That's what it says on thirteen. Right, so is it the header that's wrong or?
Uh, no, I think it's, I think it needs to be preservation of
Town character.
Unique character and agricultural heritage, as opposed to small-town character. Because I think that, if I'm, I'm trying to remember, I think that's how the conversation of this whole small-town thing came up, is we were like, being used the wrong way.
Yeah. But I, but I think you can fix that by saying, um, become a community that has all the modern-day conveniences with a small-town feel. Because we have that, you know, we have the best of both worlds, like Sean was saying. This town, before any of us, or some of us might have been here, um, but, you know, they've done a good job about putting commercial on one, commercializing one oh two, you know? I don't want, if I want to feel like I'm in the country, I could, I could drive around town for an hour and stay in the country. But if I want to get to Home Depot, it's right there. If I want to get to wherever, it's right there, which, which is nice. And you have this whole, everything they've done with the town, the schools in the center of town and, and, and of all the playing fields and ball fields, everything's, this is what feels like, when I drive through here in the morning, I feel like I'm in a small town, it's great. Then I hit the highway and back to reality.
From, from Adams Road to Shasta Drive, you feel it here in small town.
So I think that, I, I get the steering committee's point of about wanting to become, you know, a community that has all modern-day conveniences, conveniences, but if you go back to the other slide, they, we still want the small-town feel.
I like the feel.
And you can do that. So, so we can do that without doing, with, with, it won't conflict if you say with a small-town feel.
I like that a lot.
Let's face it, you're right, we are a community, but we still want to, you know, we don't want a Home Depot on the common. You know what I mean? Like, we want the small-town feel.
Yeah, I agree.
No, very well put.
I think that, I think that takes care of the problem.
Yep.
Yeah.
Very well put.
One thing I don't want to get lost in here is something like Jeff said, and I thought it was a very important point. We look at that slide number sixteen, I think it's, if that's in the actual chapter, that's confusing on how we got there, because I think a lot of people could take a look at that and go, oh, you're saying that and then you ended up here. Is it important to say what the journey was to get there? Because, because that's what slide sixteen says to me.
So I think it's, it's articulated a lot more and with, with more detail in the actual
Okay.
chapter.
Okay.
Good, because if I read the third piece, they move away from a small-town community, I'm thinking we want to be Manchester.
Yeah.
Well, remember, this is just, um, an overview, this is just an overview and, um.
You know, but if the vision is move away from a small town, I don't think that conflicts with the other.
But the vision's not, it's, I'm sorry, this is why, this is why we have to be careful what we put in these slides. Slide sixteen directly conflicts with slide seventeen, which is the draft vision that the master plan steering committee approved. That is the approval one and that should be the one what we should be discussing this evening, not slide information that's on slide sixteen.
Yes.
So let's just delete slide sixteen.
Well, it's, that information, I believe, is in the master plan right now, in the draft chapter.
And we'd have to see how that's presented, but I think.
Because that was part of what.
Do we have the draft chapter in our folder?
Well, I'll add it in a second.
Let me see if that is, yep, it is on page five.
She's adding it now.
So the Londonderry vision starts on page four and goes to page five.
We don't have it yet, I think she's adding it into our file now.
Um, you can actually, um, just go to your town website to get it from there.
Jan?
Should be.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yep.
Yep.
But this kind of relates to the question Tony had earlier, which is how, when fourteen hundred people answered the survey and the master plan steering committee developing these different recommendations, how does that work when we have so many more thousand people who did not get involved? So the steering committee didn't just use the survey and that feedback, they used the feedback plus the demographics, plus the fact that you have people from all these different boards representing, uh, the different committees and so they used a lot of information. The feedback was one portion.
And, and it's really hard to try to gauge what somebody wants if they haven't told you. You know, but.
That's, that's true. And I, I think it's a, a really good representation, actually, when you look at the, the people who did respond and, um, the number of responses, fourteen hundred is.
So Manchester's zoning ordinance survey, which had the most outreach I think I've ever seen for any local survey, just in terms of just all these meetings and everybody getting sent something in the mail, they had fewer responses for that. So fourteen hundred, yeah, it's not, you know, the whole town, but it's a pretty good size.
What is that, five percent?
I was about to say, five percent is a pretty good return on a survey.
Yeah.
Like, that's a.
I would, you know, I, nothing to sneeze at.
See, while it doesn't represent everybody, I think it's, it's a good representation, far better than other communities usually get.
Excellent.
So on page five, it still says, the committee felt the twenty twenty-five vision needed to be move away from small-town to a community that had all the modern-day conveniences. And I'm not sure that's what you want to say.
I agree.
Yeah, to me, it's, uh, can I say that we're, we're in transition? I mean, my tenure in Londonderry, we've been constantly changing. And the town has really looked at itself as a small town, that's how it thinks. But the reality is, it is, it is growing.
So if I were writing the sentence, it would say, the committee felt the twenty-five vision needed to be a community that had all the modern-day conveniences with, with, um, maintaining a small-town feel.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how I would write it if I were on the committee.
That solves everything.
Solid advice.
Yep.
Um, we're happy to add that.
I think that does kind of.
Yeah, whatever sums that up.
Because that was really what we were getting at, was.
Because I've never met anybody in Londonderry and I know a lot of people that said, oh, we don't want a small town. That's why you moved to Londonderry, you know what I mean, with the conveniences. There are other, plenty, plenty of other small towns that don't have those other stores and things like that around.
I sought this, I sought this place out for Boston, I told my friends I had an acre, they asked me what kind of a doctor I go to see for that. This is, this is the whole reason I brought my family here, you know?
Well, and I'm a guy from nineteen seventy-eight that, that in nineteen, what are, in twenty twenty-five enjoys being able to have goods and services locally.
Five minutes away.
Well, not, not just that, but I mean, how, how many towns around us have townwide trash pickup?
Correct.
Derry does not have townwide trash pickup, so.
We've been unique.
I don't think the big city of Bedford does, do they?
So I think, I think right now, I personally think it's a better town than it was in nineteen seventy-eight when I first moved here.
I agree.
So, uh, one person's opinion, but I think, I think if you change that bullet with that small-town feel thing, somewhere in there somehow, however you want to wordsmith it, I think, I think it, it, it makes a better vision.
So the.
And I do think that still supports the discussion that we had on a master plan level. Because the discussion that we had on the master plan level was, we need to recognize that Londonderry's not a small town, but we very much have a small-town feel.
So that third bullet on the top of page five, what do you want it to read? Recognize a growing town, recognizing the growth of the community that has all modern-day conveniences with a small-town feel?
While keeping.
While keeping the small-town feel.
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, I mean, we, a- a- as a town, we know we're growing, but I think all of us sitting here at least are gonna fight tooth and nail to try to keep that small-town feel for as long as we can. I mean, it's, it, it's inevitable that, you know, all of New Hampshire is growing southern-wise and it's, even when you go up north now, there's.
Twenty years from now, Loudon will be dealing with what we're dealing with.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Progression of life.
Yep.
They'll be looking at our master plan, see how we handle.
Right. They'll be debating this sentence.
All right, I just want to read it one more time, so.
Maintaining a small-town feel. While maintaining a small-town feel, I think is what people seem to like.
Building the vision was that, yeah, wanted a community that had all the modern-day conveniences while maintaining a small-town feel.
All right, so the first part has now changed again, so I had recognize a growing community was the beginning, instead of move away from a small town to a community, so.
You're not moving, you're not moving away from a small town.
No, so now I had recognize, uh, a growing community that has all the modern-day conveniences while maintaining a small-town feel.
So how was this worded on the survey? Because if I remember correctly, this was the number two item as far as what people wanted for this community. And I'm wondering what that exact wording was that we used there. The first one, I think, was maintain a responsible tax rate and then the second part was maintain, it's, it was worded well.
I have to look for that question. So the question was, I believe the question was, when, there are a couple of questions. When considering the future of Londonderry, what would you like the town to be known for? So that was one of them. And that, the number one was great town to raise a family, then a growing town that maintains its, his, I think it's historic charm. That's it. And then the next, no, it's the same question. Yeah.
So where do we?
Growing town that maintains its historic New England character was the second one.
Where'd we get move away from small-town?
Move, so.
That was the.
It's getting a little mixed up.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was a conversation about, and I'm trying to go back like six months at this point. There was a conversation about at the master plan, the need to recognize that Londonderry is not and has not been a small town for a long time. Because it was being taken out of context. And the, the, the fact of the matter is Londonderry has not been a small town since the highway came through Londonderry and we saw twenty percent growth year after year. That's when Londonderry stopped becoming a small town. And the board felt as though it was important to recognize that Londonderry is not a small town while we stu- still do have a small town feel. And I, the board felt as though it was important to to recognize that we're not, we have a small town feel, but we are not a small town. Londonderry hasn't been a small town.
So, so does this change?
No, I think this is, I think, I, I think we're still fine with it. I, I, I think it got taken out of context a little bit here. And I think we've brought up a very good point. But to answer his question, where, where did we come up with move away from a small town? The conversation was simply.
If you knew that precursor, then that doesn't.
That's why.
That makes sense.
That's what, to me, it all makes sense because I was there and I talked about it. Exactly, exactly. But as somebody who's not there, you need to have it worded differently.
Trip up comes.
Correct.
So I, I did find it, uh, for the next question, when thinking about Londonderry in its present state, what would you want to preserve the most? Preservation of open space and farmland, connection to nature, cultural and his historical heritage and small town charm. So I think, I think the distinction, and I think you're all capturing it, is and what I remember, it's not a small town, but it has small town feel, small town charm.
Correct.
So I think that's the distinction here. And what I'm.
And I can definitely see how this is very easily misconstrued if you are not part of that conversation.
There are, there are towns around Boston that are much bigger than us, but have a small town charm.
Correct, correct.
I mean, nobody realizes it's a big town until election day. And then you're like, where do all these people come from?
Yeah, when you looped around Matthew Thorpe in school.
Yeah.
Or, or if you live in South Londonderry, you have to go register your kid in the school district.
The twenty-five minute drive to get up north.
So, shall we try again?
Yeah.
On that bullet, we're cro- we're taking out move away from small town to a community. That's out. Instead, we're recognizing a growing community that has all the modern day conveniences while maintaining a small town feel.
I think that's perfect. Would you agree?
Yes.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Okay, that's in that one. So now let's move to the vision. We're not done.
Charm makes sense.
I was just gonna say, because they use.
Do you like?
They used.
That still has the same fault.
And the reason I say that is because it's the exact wording in the survey and part of why I was trying to draw from that is.
That's why you're trying to get to it, what it is.
Do you want?
And then I was just mulled it around in my head and it popped out.
So while maintaining a small town.
Charm.
Well.
The small town charm.
While maintaining. I don't like the way.
Small town feel and charm, which is.
I think, just go with charm. That's what people said.
That's fine.
With, how about, can I say while maintaining its small town charm?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thing I've heard you say all night.
That's fine. Um, all right.
You're doing so well.
Is that gonna be?
Come on.
Londonderry's new slogan, big town, small town feel.
Yeah.
Charm.
All right.
Small town charm, sorry.
So on this one, can we add to the first sentence? Um, while embracing responsible growth and modern conveniences, while enjoying its small town charm? Or how would you like me to?
Embracing responsible growth and modern conveniences while maintaining its small town charm.
It's small town town.
Yeah.
Well, and there's twice.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. I don't think this one's as confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, I think this pretty much captures it.
You, you like it the way it is?
Yeah.
I mean, small town charm is unique character and agricultural heritage. That is what our small town charm is.
Those are three defining characteristics of small town.
Fair.
It's more detail.
Fair.
All right, shall we? Okay. Let's.
We were switching on to somebody else. You had just finished up. We got to the house, the thing with the pictures of houses.
We are now, yes.
Proposed land use strategies.
Bottom button.
So we're now in proposed strategies for housing and land use.
Are these current dwellings in Londonderry?
No.
These are different types of housing. I believe the top left is in Londonderry. And so is, I forget now, but I'm gonna guess at least three are.
So they're, they're not in Londonderry.
Not necessarily.
There's at least four of them that are.
Okay, so we're just, these are just housing types.
Four corners.
Sorry.
Okay. So there's a lot of words here, so we'll take one bullet at a time. How's that? Um, proposed land use strategies, coordinate land use boards and committees in the review of recommended zoning revisions and process strategies recommended by the current review and assessment of the Londonderry zoning ordinance. That actually, you'll hear from James in a short, hopefully in just a few minutes, about the housing opportunity grant that's, that we're doing that zoning ordinance review. So coordinating that. Uh, support coordinated review and update of, uh, the P U D ordinance by the planning department and town staff as well as land use boards and committees. Support town staff review of reduced impervious surface and groundwater protection in all land use development applications. Identify north, south, and east-west corridors for roadway improvements to reduce traffic congestions. Sorry, congestion. Work to identify, preserve, and invest in historical and cultural properties. Update open space, landscape, and screening regulations that promotes preservation of forested areas, vegetated open space, street trees, and improved landscape planting plans. Work with the conservation commission, planning department, and Londonderry trails with, trailways to map out potential connections to the Londonderry rail trail. Reimagine Londonderry as a walkable community, promote new residential developments. Wait, prom- have onsite amenities, including multi-use paths or sidewalks while working to establish white, walkable, bikeable connections on existing roadways when feasible. And in parentheses, further discussion slash confirmation.
So I got two things on this. Number one, north, south, east, west corridors, right? Unless you're talking about Mammoth Road and one oh two, you're talking about updating somebody's street, which no longer makes it small town charm, right? The other thing is, and, and I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying this is where these, these conflicts come into play. And then reimagine Londonderry as a walkable community with, you know, sidewalks and bike paths and stuff like that, which to many people is not that small town charm.
Walkability becomes a city.
Exactly. Yeah, now you got sidewalks. Now you gotta plow sidewalks. Now you got, so like, they, we, we, you know, we're requesting, and, and I saw this throughout, and I think it's just the nature of this type of a project. There are so many conflicting, you know, if you want to do this for somebody now to somebody else, you have removed this small town charm that, that they want.
So I'll agree with you. I, I'll say especially on the second one with the sidewalks and all of that, that, that's actually over the line for me on, on small town charm. I think, I think we probably shouldn't go down that road. As far as the, the north, south, east, west corridors, and I was a one behind that line because traffic for me is a really important issue in this town. As much as that may remove some of the small town charm, the reality is, we've grown beyond one oh two and Mammoth.
I, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I'm just saying the people who live on.
Yep.
On High Range Road.
Yep.
Or, you know, the, the roads that are going to be impacted by this are gonna jump and scream that they're no longer.
Absolutely.
And, and I live basically in the Londonderry Village, and I would love to see sidewalks in Londonderry Village in the, in that area. And I think it's a perfect place for it. But then if you tell somebody else, they're like, oh, no, no, we can never have sidewalks. So a- a- again, it all depends on who you are, what your perspective is, and, you know, and, and one person's small town charm is another person's annoyance.
Well, and there's a common thing that people are complaining about when it comes to it, even the, the people who live on those roads that may be those roads. Everybody's complaining about people are going too fast down my road, they're cutting through this road, they're cutting through that road. We keep moving stop signs all over everywhere in the town. We keep moving speed limits from this one to this one to this one, and we're never really addressing the issue. And somebody's road is gonna have to be, like, it, it's gonna have to be somebody. And that's.
I live, I live on Hall Road. It's become a eighteen wheeler and drag strip.
Yep.
Ever since we put those, those, uh, stop signs on Mammoth, which now for the people on Mammoth, they're like, oh, this is perfect. But for me, living on Hall Road where it's a straightaway.
Isn't a no-through trucking road too?
Huh? I have seen, I have seen.
I'm just saying.
I've seen eighteen wheelers knock over the no-through trucking sign. Yeah, but those, there's no-through trucking. Yeah, so like, for those stop signs on Old Mammoth, they love it now because there's nobody driving down Old Mammoth. They're all going down Hall Road now. So you're right.
And instead of playing whack-a-mole with the problems, even those roads that are the north, south, east, west corridors that we're gonna identify, those roads are problematic, those people already.
Yep.
They're already like, well, I can't get out into my street. Well, if we start doing some roadway improvements, maybe at least that'll get better. So it's gonna improve. It's not gonna go back to the way it was, and it never will.
And, and, and I, I, I think these are right. I agree with these. I'm just saying.
Oh, the conflict.
Exactly, that there is going to be, that, that there's this inherent conflict in this.
I think it highlights the need for a in-depth analysis and true roadway improvement plan for the town of Londonderry as a whole. I think it identifies that and highlights it.
Yeah, I, I think another thing is, is that, like, you get to the village area. You may not have sidewalks, and sidewalks not, may not be a requirement for walkable. But the, the, the village areas is developed tighter density so that neighbors can walk to neighbor's house.
Yeah.
Versus, hey, can I get a ride from mom or dad to drive down the other end of the subdivision that's actually a half a mile away, but only three houses away? You know? So there are other ways, and I'm sure creative land use could, could figure that out, where you could create walkability without necessarily putting in a sidewalk.
Yeah, and to, and to that point, that, that. By the way, I, I love that whack-a-mole game. Thank you for bringing it up. Um, the, the sidewalks is, is not necessarily the panacea that people think they are. You, you can make, you can make, you can put a line down the road, which in some cities is a bike path, right? It's two white lines.
Those are a disaster.
With a photo of a bike on it, and that's, and that's you put a, put a person in it, put a, put a picture of a person in it, and now you have a, a walkway, right? So there's another way to do it besides a sidewalk. The, the, the language says, uh, as appropriate or when necessary, or whatever it said. Um, but, but it, this, going back to the comprehensive plan that the chairperson just so eloquently spoke of, the, the other way to do this whole thing is, instead of redesigning all the roads in town, so that the people from the north and the south and the west can get to where the goods and services are, which is exit four, instead provide those or, or help zoning allow for those goods and services at exit five.
Yes.
Now you have, I'm gonna throw out a number that's probably not right, twenty-five percent of the community that lives up there that doesn't have to drive down all the cow paths through town instead of going on the highway for whatever reason. They don't want to use the highway and they use the, the secondary roads. And now y- y- you have a certain n- number of less cars because those services and goods are being provided at a different part of town. We have a huge landmass, right? We know that. It was, it was, w- w- when it was first set up, it wasn't designed to be that, this many people, just like most places, most towns. And I, and I think that, that if we, i- i- if we work somehow, some way to break it up so that there's two spots in town where there's goods and services instead of one, that's gonna, that's gonna help get rid of some of the traffic.
Yes.
Not all of it. There's still, there's still only gonna be one post office.
That's a good point, Tony. That's a good strategy.
Yeah, there's still only gonna be one, uh, uh, one, one post office. There's still gonna only be one high school.
Right.
You know, but.
And twenty-seven banks, but yes.
A hundred percent. So, so.
But I, I don't know how, because I live near exit five.
Conceptual.
Rather than going to exit, rather than going to exit four, I go to Manchester, right? And it's a pain. And it takes me almost as long to go the four miles to the Home Depot in Manchester as it does to go to the one in Londonderry. But like, so for that area of town, it's, you're just gonna go to Manchester as opposed to drive down to exit four.
Well, especially because we have nothing at exit five.
Exactly.
As it stands.
It's just a conceptual thought that, you know, you, you read land planning books, which, which I do. And, and some of the newer land planners are talking about getting away from a central hub for goods and services.
Yep.
And making multiples.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah.
So just, just a thought.
Wholeheartedly agree.
You know, this is like, like in the, in the city, there's like different areas where there's always a store and stuff, and people walk, you know, that, that type of thing. But O'Dagans.
I don't really like the idea of sidewalks. I, I, I know we've talked about them, but I mean, to your point, you go to Manchester to get your goods. What happens as soon as you loop around the, uh, the airport and you get to where like the fire station is, sidewalks on both sides of the road, and guess what? You're in the city of Manchester.
Yeah.
Um, I, I find them to be, I don't know, maybe if we lived in South Carolina or something, sidewalks would be more, uh, more appealing, but.
I don't think anybody is saying sidewalks on Adams Road.
No, but that, that is what, that's what this leans into, is put sidewalks everywhere. Sidewalks everywhere is gonna solve the problem, and it's like.
Yeah, I think that's a.
No, it's not.
I agree with you there.
It was the first word, it was the only word in all of that that I went, ugh.
I think with sidewalks too, is it kind of goes in, and I, in, I don't know, it, it it may not, it may not be, it might just be a, you know, drop in the bucket to maintain sidewalks and build them out. I, 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 I don't know. I haven't seen any, um,
No.
fiscal responsibilities, but it goes against our draft vision of ensuring fiscal responsibility through sound investments in infrastructure. I also, you it'd probably be also good for us to kind of look at the size of our roads anyway, because I know in the neighborhood that I live in, um, I mean, granted, we only, we, we don't get many cars, but it's wide enough that you can have two people, you know, on both sides, walk on the side of the street with a dog, um, and then have two cars, you know, you know, pass by. So I, I, I think that's actually a good, that's favorable for us is the, the length of our overall roadways. I mean, the width rather.
I think that's very important to point out is, is the width of the, uh, the road, you know. A wider roadway is so much easier than a roadway with, with sidewalks on each side of it, which actually became a very common con- uh, conversation through the fifty-five plus communities that came to town. Nobody wanted them because, you know, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain sidewalks inside a cross farm. And it just adds a whole nother dimension. You've got tighter roadways now.
Yeah.
Got all this up and down. You've got all this extra curbing.
But yet, but yet, when.
Cross driveway then up, up and down.
The development by the, um, behind the dive shop.
Bullen Village?
No, the Nevens, the Nevens, I thought they were doing all that work. I thought they were getting rid of their sidewalks. They put them all back when they, when they were done. And yet, we've had people come here from that development and say, well, we hate the sidewalks because of the up, that whole up and down thing. It's such a short straightaway, and then you're going up and down. So, and, so they're walking the street. They don't e- even use them. But yet, there's a development, uh, God knows how much it cost them. But I can't imagine, their, their HOA fees were high to, to start with. And now they re, they did that work and they put the sidewalks back.
Yeah.
I thought they were gonna take them out.
Could we take sidewalks out of here?
Yeah, you should.
I'm gonna just propose that.
I like multi-use paths. You know, I think we've got some great. I like multi-use paths, you know, I think we've got some great you know, the little community there off of, off of Young Road that's gonna have like paths that kind of go around the house. That's different, you know, gives you a little, I I like multi-use paths, I just.
Yeah, but those are, those are pretty much strictly for people within the development.
Correct.
Alright, so I think what, one one thing that we really probably should focus on is, hold on, guys. Stop talking about sidewalks.
Well, we gotta get through it.
Right, no, I know, but what we're talking about is, what's the problem we're trying to solve with sidewalks? We're trying to have people walk in these communities. So I think what we could, you know, in, this is kind of, you know, it's update the sentence, update that point, just saying, promote new residential developments that have more walkable communities. That also allows us to have flexibility for some of these communities that might be, you know, kind of private communities that might be, you know, acceptable for with sidewalks. Allows us to um kind of focus on the width of roads and and such like that. But it also provides potential developers that are coming in, and they're seeing, they're, they're like, okay, I need to develop something that has a walkable community. And that's, and whatever the kind of, the whatever the tasks are, or whatever the kind of, you um you know, milestones for that would be, that would fall under that strategy.
Yeah, I I I am fine with the no sidewalk thing, I'm absolutely fine with that. However, for us to say reimagine Londonderry as a walkable community.
Good point.
Without making any suggestion as to how to do that. Cause right now, we're saying it's not. And on the majority of the roads in town, you really don't wanna be walking down that road. Right? So we're saying we want Londonderry as a walkable community. And, you know, and then in some of these developments that we're building, we can put some paths in there that the people who live in there. But that's not gonna help ninety-five percent of the town become a walkable community.
Well, Giovanni brought up a good point. Another way to do that is density, and we don't mention that anywhere.
Well, that's what's, that's what's going through my head is, is you know, what he, I I forget how you, how you worded it, unique land use or whatever you.
Well, creative.
Creative land use. You know, there's different ways to re- to create walkability to his point, and um, you know. That is through, you you can do it through density in smaller homes, and 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 that does maintain, you know, a small town vibe, uh look at old Londonderry, the village. Tiny homes on small lots that are next to each other, you know, it's density.
Yep.
Um and it's walkable to, you know, to his point earlier, it's walkable because you can get four houses down in a hundred feet, you know.
You know, it creates a couple of other different things too, if you do it right. If you're trying to retain conservation land, things to that nature, you could still put your, I mean, it reduces municipal services for plowing and stro- road maintenance. You could take, say, the fifty lots, I could go on seventy acres and put them up closer. And you could put the rest in conservation, you know, it is is, it would make it easier for you when you put in water and sewer. There's just like so many, if we break down the confines that we have right now of a traditional subdivision, and we say, what's our ultimate goal? Because a lot of the subdivision rules and regulations today have been created on to cr- to promote urban sprawl and to limit development or what have you, when you can take the different approach and say, how do you do it better?
Well, it's kind of like what the 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 concepts that came in front of us on, up on on Pillsbury for Woodmont Commons, you know, I mean.
Is a perfect example of unique land use.
Several hundred, single-family houses on an acre lot. Same amount of houses, a lot less, and now you've got conservation land, you've got.
Yeah, still the same amount of houses with more density and a whole lot of green space.
Exactly.
You know? So what I'm hearing is that the group is suggesting remove or sidewalks, but leave the rest?
I I think we need to add to it on, Giovanni helped me out a little bit here. Promoting unique land use. I don't know if ideas is the right word.
Creative land use development that promotes uh walkable communities and
Yeah.
Some hit some of these other points that we're trying to bring into.
Yeah.
In new development.
Did anyone get that, create?
I think that's important too, inside a new development.
New development.
Inside new development is important.
You wanna, that's the part that I've just keep ro- roaring back to, inside new development. You wanna kind of let it be known that we're not coming for your sidewalks.
You're not coming to take.
But if we're gonna, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna develop like we want to, can we, can we maybe have some? You know, and it does promote easier water, sewer, anything that we can accommodate.
So new and redevelopment, cause not everything's gonna stay the same forever.
Yeah, yeah. Cause Hardy Road is never gonna be walkable. Ever.
So stop talking about it.
Ever.
For high range.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
I do wanna circle back around to some of these major routes though, like maybe Route twenty-eight or or
One oh two.
One oh two or Mammoth Road and things like that, where they do, you know, you have, if you had your, if those were your major routes and you had the 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 little hubs, the communities coming to them, maybe that's where you wanna create um a sidewalk or what have you, that then, that's a safe way to get to another side of a town or to a bike path, or to the rail trail, or something like that, if that, if that was travers- traversable in a safe manner. And it's not necessarily conflicting with the other views of of, hey, we're gonna put sidewalks everywhere. And so that might be a different approach to it as well.
Can I make a suggestion from listening to Giovanni? Creative land use within new development and connections to community amenities through promotion of onsite amenities, including multi-use paths, while working to establish walkable, bikeable connections on existing roadways when feasible. So I've recognized the new development and connections to what you were talking about just now, is connections to community amenities. So a community amenity could be this, the high school, could be a park, could be your beautiful sports complex, could be um a small commercial area, or a large commu- commercial area, so creating connections.
The only thing I was suggesting, Sylvia, is that we could, in those, in the major, Route twenty-eight has lost its small town charm or what have you, and it's a state road.
Right.
But it does connect, it's a major artery. So maybe in those areas, you could still put something in that's safe, like a bike path or a sidewalk or something, that could, and it takes you to a lot of places like, say, rail trails and things to that nature.
Right, and the bullet above it actually also speaks to this because we're talking about creating connections to the Londonderry Rail Trail. Which
And this does kind of tie.
Major connection.
And this does kind of tie into the first bullet point there, where, you know, zoning revisions and process strategies recommended. So, you know, talking about those smaller lot sizes, allowing different types of.
We still need to make a change, yeah.
I, yeah, so I I I'm I'm gonna have a suggestion here, on on the last bullet point again. Instead of just removing sidewalks, I think I would put there walkways. So multi-use paths or walkways.
I like it.
Because it doesn't necessarily have to be a sidewalk for you to get to point to A, from point A to point B. It could be some kind of a walkway somehow, some way, made of whatever it is. Which, for a new development, the walkway could be a sidewalk. So if you, if you keep that word in there, walkway, the connections that Giovanni's talking about still exist, and let's figure it out when we get to planning, when a, when a project comes before us or the town or whatever, to Kelly and John, the conversations happen, right? But they're not hemmed in by a regulation that has that word sidewalk in it.
So can I ask the group, cause I think that is a great solution, taking out sidewalks, putting in walkways? The only other thing then is, the the underlined area, if we take that out, reimagine Londonderry as a walkable community, and instead, go with something more of what um Giovanni was talking about, which is creative land use to create connections, does that make sense?
Promote, promote.
London, yeah.
Prom- promote unique land use. Yeah.
I might say to accomplish some of the overall goals, or, you know, because it does accomplish trying to get water and sewer established in certain areas, and in some ways, you could, you could, you could enhance your conservation areas and things to that nature too.
I really like that, I I'm I'm thinking back too on the um sidewalk removal, we're not gonna take anyone's sidewalks. I really like, I really like midnight, midnight sidewalk removal. And we'll put John on that. You wake up in the morning, your sidewalk gone.
He's just out there with a.
Midnight sidewalk removal.
Only, only among the those.
Do we have a final bullet?
I don't know.
Sylvia, I would say we have a very good understanding of it, if you could shoot Jeff and I, me as the chair and him as the chair of the master plan, a few recommendations. I think we can speak on behalf of the board before the next meeting, and we can all agree on it.
Alright, um I'm, we'll include Kelly as well, alright?
Well, yeah. That's kind of like default, you know?
Just putting it out there. Verifying, okay, so we'll come up with some, some trial runs, you guys can tweak it. Alright, are we ready for the next one? Yes, we are, proposed housing strategies. Promote small development by making it easier to subdivide single-family lots, such as small smaller road frontage requirements, allowances for back lot development, such as pork chop lot, and two-family conversions. Promote zoning land use regulations that allows greater housing choice to meet the needs of new and existing residents. Allow mixed-use development in commercial zones. Coordinate land use boards and committees in the review of recommended zoning revisions and process strategies recommended by the current review and assessment of the Londonderry zoning ordinance. Update soil-based lot sizing to reflect New Hampshire DES or other state agencies' most updated recommendations. And tie into regional and or statewide initiatives on housing. Further discussion slash confirmation, and that is because of, there were all kinds of new state RSAs and coordination on that.
Walk me through this whole back lot development thing.
That.
What is it?
So that's, let's say you have a lot with, uh let's say a hundred and fifty frontage, right? And, but it's ten acres. And it's a long, narrow lot. You want your adult kid that's just graduated from college to be able to live in your town. They can't find anything affordable. So you're like, look, you're about to get married, I'll give you that back lot. Right now, you could put an ADU on it, as of just recently, but it would be a small, would be a small home. This way, they could.
Well, that would depend on the size of the first home, right?
So Jake, I'm Bar- Barley Hill Road, the road I live on. The road, the houses all have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, but eight hundred feet of depth, right? So if you, if you're on Barley Hill Road, just before you're going toward Mammoth, just before you start going downhill, there's five or six back lot developments just like this. So you have the house on the road, you have a s- a driveway going to a house behind them. Those lots were subdivided in this exact manner.
Similar to where you live, Jake, on Adams Road.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Could I give another example of that? We're in a different town, I'm doing a little subdivision, and we have, it's a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage that is required, but it's really, it's like a twenty-acre lot. And as opposed to putting in a road to service possibly eight lots, we'd like to get three on the road. And except I don't have enough frontage for one of the lots. But the thought process behind having a hundred and fifty feet of of, so one of them's gonna be a pork chop lot. But I gotta get a variance for that, right? And the whole thought process behind having a hundred and fifty feet frontage is that you have enough side yard setback from your neighbors and things to that nature to support that lot, and you know, livability of that lot. But soon as the lot leaves the street, probably twenty feet, hundred, twenty, twenty-five feet up, winds out to this particular lot that would need a variance for, winds out to three hundred feet of frontage. Well, at that point, right? So it's still accomplishing it, but it reduces the impact on the municipality, and it allows for that pork chop type lot that would allow for a more affordable lot for somebody at some point in the future.
Yeah, the idea is existing homeowners can get either a little more equity out of their lot, or they can include their family in, you know, future decisions.
And when we were looking at up the parcels, we noticed that Londonderry does have a large number of these, you know, larger-sized parcels, but they have a, you know, a sh- a small frontage. But if you could just access all the land behind, you'd be open up a lot of potential development.
So I I'd like to make a comment to TV land and people who are gonna, who who are listening to this now, and who are gonna watch it later on, I wanna be very clear that that all of this stuff that we're talking about is conceptual in nature, right? It's gonna go, it's gonna go in the format of 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 a, basically a strategic plan for the town moving forward. But in order for anything, any of this to hap- actually happen, is gonna take a tremendous amount of time and effort from staff to change zoning rules, regulations, and and whatnot. So this, this thing is is basically a a a panacea thumbnail sketch of a direction that the that the town could go, or a direction that that building could go. But in order for that to happen, there's a lot of other things that have to happen, we're talking, I I I don't even know, years, to 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 change policy, to change rules, to change regulations, to check with the RSAs. There's a lot of backwork that's gonna have to happen for any of this to occur. And and I want people who are gonna be watching this and and, you know, newspaper headlines, just to be very clear, right now, this cannot happen. Because the rules and regulations of the town don't allow it, and the zoning rules don't allow it. Can it, could it happen? Absolutely, but there's a lot of other things that that are gonna have to happen in the Jenga puzzle to to make it happen, so I just, I'm gonna get that on the table, so. Thank you.
I mean, the idea here was to keep it small, and I think that's what the subcommittee, the master plan subcommittee really honed in on were possible ways to keep future growth small. And that's one way.
So I'm not sure, Sylvia, I understand the second bullet, what that really means. Could you provide a little more context around that?
Which part, the greater housing choice or?
Promote zoning, so we have, we have our zoning regulations that allow greater housing choice. I don't understand what greater housing choice is, is it allowing a different, something other than a single-family house or a duplex in AR1? Is it coming up with a new zone that allows for a fourplex? I don't understand housing choices.
Uh di- diversity in housing, different types of housing.
ADUs.
It could be, I don't know, really small lots, um it could be, you know, just more, more diversity in the housing.
I think it's, sorry, anything from an ADU to, like, we were talking about.
I think it's, sorry, anything from an ADU to, like, we were talking about the cottage court style, the Papal project, just modifying or amending regulations, you know, when this board or others see fit to start to plan for that.
Okay.
I would think like tiny homes would be in that, things of that nature, which I don't think you could do right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, keep moving here, anything else, folks?
All right, so we're almost at the end, so we've had feedback and discussion all along. Some questions for you, are there any priorities, recommendations we've missed or underestimate, underemphasized? How can we improve these draft chapters to better serve Lunandary? Are there additional outreach strategies you would like to, us to follow for the next three chapters? And just to, a reminder, this is your plan. Next steps, we're going to incorporate the feedback we've heard tonight. And hopefully we will finalize then these chapters and you will adopt them, maybe at, even at your next meeting, not sure. And then just to be aware, the, the survey for the next tier of the three chapters, natural resources, transportation, economic development is already out, it's on the website. And so we would love assistance in that outreach, and the steering committee will be talking about that, I think, even, is it next week, Kelly, is that our meeting?
Yep, the next meeting of the master plan steering committee is next Thursday at six.
It's our next thing.
So you said the next three chapters, how, how many chapters do you envision in this document that you're producing?
Well, your last master plan, I think, was really different, it was a whole different effort. But I think there were probably at least eight or nine, so I believe there was no suggestion on reducing the number of chapters, but certainly the size, they want this to be much more usable as a tool and, um, just really something that's not just gonna sit on the shelf.
Mr. Chair, I could make a recommendation, I think we should probably look at, and, cause I think we have the purview as the planning board to identify what chapters we want to include, I think that would allow, that would give direction to the steering committee. That would then kind of provide direction to staff to kind of go down there, so I think that's, like, that's a great point, Tony. Good question about, you know, how many chapters. There's also a minimum from a regulatory standpoint that we need to, that, that we have to also update, which I, I don't have the regs in front of me, Tony, I don't know if you have.
You've already done it.
Right, so, thank you, um, so we've already met the minimum regulations with these.
And vision.
But they need to have a future land use map, I believe.
A map, yes.
A future land use map.
What that looks like, you have a lot of flexibility in.
So, uh, future land use map would definitely be something we would want to absolutely include in a very soonish, um, steering committee plan. So that's what my, I would definitely suggest that, of kind of what, the, the chapters that we want to include. I know that, you know, from last year, we went, uh, you know, when we kind of had this initial conversation, we went on our comprehensive twenty, um, or, you know, early, you know, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen plan. You know, this being an update to that plan, I think is, it's, so, and for us to actually kind of move forward with it in a way that makes sense for our town.
Is there a way we can begin to implement these chapters as we're moving forward here?
In a way you already are through what James will talk about soon, and that's the HOP grant.
So what I, what I'm thinking of Sylvia is, you know, when do we start putting together an implementation plan? I'm, I'm afraid that if we wait until the end, we're gonna forget everything that we've done to date. And I, I don't see why we can't start putting together something as we finalize these draft chapters, either on a chap, I don't know, on a chapter-by-chapter basis, a project-by-project basis, I don't know the answer to that. But we need to start putting together a timeline for finishing this and putting together an implementation plan.
To me, it feels though it's more important to do that than to start on natural resources, transportation, and economic development. Do you agree?
Yeah.
I agree.
I apologize for standing up, I'm having back spasms.
It's all right, I didn't even notice.
You know, it's funny, I, I've never heard that before. I'm seventy-two, I've never heard that before, so thank you for bringing it up.
So, I think that's a good point, right? What's our implementation plan, how is it documented? Because we're gonna be presenting this to the public in a public hearing, they're gonna be like, great, now what? What's next? And so I, I, I think as a board, we would, you know, the, the steering committee would value that kind of direction on where you want us to go.
And I think that was some of the feedback from the last master plan is, it's great we've got all these nice words, but a lot of things never came to fruition.
Never happened.
That, that we talked about and described in the plan. For various good reasons, or bad reasons, good reasons, but I just think, uh, you know, I'm built around, let's start doing things, you know, putting together this plan is one of the things we needed to do, but now what do we do with it? And, and what's the timeline around, you know, the actions coming out of this?
Just to remind the group that initially, last year at this time, you divi, you decided, oh my goodness, you decided on three tiers. First tier was the demographics, land use, housing, regional view. This tier, the second tier, natural resource, transportation, economic development, and then a third tier, I can't remember the chapters, I'm gonna guess recreation is one of them. And historic, historic district.
Energy, maybe?
Maybe, maybe energy. So that's when, that's how this whole tier design was developed, was, I think it was from this group last year. If not this group, the master plan subcommittee.
So I'd say we're completing tier one, how do we implement tier one is what I'm hearing.
Now we can.
We need to focus on the implementation of this first tier. If I'm hearing the board correctly, the implementation of this first tier is more important than the second tier.
And we also, and part of that too is balancing staff, resources.
I don't see why we're heading into the survey, or already into the survey, I guess technically, for the next tier. So I don't see why we can't start discussing what implementation, action items, whatever term you wanna use, looks like for the chapters that, hopefully after this conversation are essentially complete, with the exception of the public input.
What we need to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's like a six-week time period where the survey is just out there and we're promoting it. In the meanwhile, we can talk about this implementation, how does that sound?
As, we, yes, it conceptually sounds great, we have these conversations all the time that we can do this, we could do that, but we never do this and do that, so honestly, great. Give me a, get the, get the master plan steering committee a schedule that we follow with directions to kind of, that we need to kind of review. I want us also, you know, I really need the board input on this as well, because my recollection is that we never actually had a vote on those three tiers. The master plan steering committee is, is, you know, is a subcommittee of this board. You guys provide the guidance for this. And we need, I, you know, it's very apparent to me now, and I, all guys for the last year, I haven't been more vocal on this, I think we need more collaboration, I think part of that too is that we're going to, um, we just.
You need a plan.
I wanna, we need a plan, we need a schedule, we need, we can't go months and months and then, we cannot do another year of this. Of, of, we can't have these three tiers go a year, you know, you know, having them go a year. And then we're talking about an implementation plan, which is incredibly important. Who's doing that, what staff resources are, you know, gonna do that, and Kelly, I definitely appreciate you and your staff's time, but I also wanna be sensitive to that.
Okay.
So, I mean, if, 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 if staff is definitely saying, we can do it, let's work, work, work together, we'll get a schedule down, we, we've learned a lot in the last year. You know, and such like that.
So I think it's important to acknowledge though what Sylvia has mentioned at least once already in that this first tier, if you will, with these chapters, is the heaviest lift. We're talking about a lot of data, a lot of good data, that's very important. And the committee spent a lot of time, meetings upon meetings, hours and hours, some of which I was there for, some of not, but talking a lot about data and the survey results, which is, was, in my view, that was really important that that time was spent on that. Um, and I think that the chapters reflect that very well. So, you know, I like to think that this next tier is, it's data-driven, I'm not gonna say it's not data-driven, but it's, it's a different tier, it's a different set of data that we're looking at, it's.
It's easier.
It's easier, it's less controversial, I think is one of the words Sylvia used, or it can be. So I think that's something else to keep in mind, it's more realistic, uh, given that information, for me at least, to think about staff time and resources and how long this may or may not take, and then come up with a timeframe in coordination with the RPC and this board and the committee.
Okay. So how do we wanna move as a board on a prioritization here?
I would imagine that a lot of this tier two is gonna be significantly impacted by what we come up, come up with in tier one.
Tier one's here.
I have a question.
Yeah.
As far as implementing, so we implement some of these changes, I know that it involves changing codes, not codes, but, um, you know, rules and regulations for the town, but if we get, so one of the things we know is a small-town feel. So as far as I understand this board, let's say Home Depot wanted to build it a common, and the common was for sale, okay, let's just throw it out there. That meets all the guidelines and the sewer and everything, everything's fine, but doesn't have that small-town feel. Can we reject something because it doesn't give us that small-town feel? We can't.
No, so what we're talking about is, when you talk about implementation, you're, you're talking about an actionable.
Correct.
Item, so it's not like small, small-town feel, that's not an act, action.
No, an action, an action would be creating XYZ, you know, zoning amendment to reflect.
Till the end of time, how do you do that?
Preservation of the town, yeah, yeah.
Right, okay.
Jeff, I mean, I guess, what do you want from the board? What's the biggest thing you want from the, you're asking for collaboration and direction from the board, what exactly is it you want so we can give it to you?
Yeah, so I want the board to kind of tell us, you know, tell the planning, you know, are, are we good with this, are we good to kind of work in parallel with the implementation plan for the first tier while also, um, collecting the, the data and the research for, you know, the second tier? When do we, you know, who do we want involved with the implement, you know, drafting the implementation? Is that the steering committee, or is that some, or is that an implementation committee? Is that different, is that, so I think it's those types of clarity that we wanna definitely, and Kelly, go.
So I believe the way it was done in twenty thirteen is the committee, um, the master plan, steering committee, whatever it was called, came up with the implementation, it's essentially an appendix to the plan, and then a committee was formed after the fact to implement said action items, whatever you wanna call them.
I hate committees.
I don't see that, that way going right.
Nope, can we leave it at a planning board level?
Yeah.
Can we create the implementation at the planning board level?
I think that's the wisest, cause the.
I just, I mean, who's gonna be on the committee, the master plan steering committee? I kinda.
It's, it's kinda what happened with the thirteen master plan.
And I, I think that becomes part of the problem, is you just end up having so many irons in the fire that, you know, paralysis by analysis, right?
I think it makes sense to have it here as well, because most likely here, this board is going to be actually taking the actions, if you will, to make these changes, but I don't know, I mean, the other option is you have a smaller scale, another committee, but like a, a subcommittee or whatnot, that's strictly focused on.
So to clarify, I guess Jeff, to help you, this is getting close to ready for prime time, which is a public hearing, after a public hearing, and these, these first three chapters are accepted, it would really be in the hands of, of this board to then create the implementation for it. So while this board is actively creating implementation for the first three chapters, the master plan steering committee can still focus on their charge of getting these next three chapters done. Natural resources, transportation, and economic development.
Perfect.
I, I think that would be the best way to do it, I, it just, I personally, I think you start getting committees to subcommittees to subcommittees to the other committee, it starts getting crazy.
Get out of.
I support that.
And then it's gonna come here anyway.
Yeah, no, exactly, and, and we'll have the same deliberations. And that makes perfect sense, because it also allows the steering committee to focus on one thing and not two things in parallel.
Correct, exactly, exactly, so, so we'll let the planning board focus on the implementation of it and what that looks like, while at the master plan level, we're working at, at our next, next group of chapters here, I think is, is the best way to, to address that.
What would you like that to look like, are you looking for a work session to discuss the implementation items for the first three chapters? And then staff will take that feedback, generate actual items, bring it back, go through that series of.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think that's probably the, the best way to do it. All right, anything else?
Um, and the board is still okay with the steering committee moving forward with the second tier?
Yep.
Yes.
And the third tier, um.
Sylvia doesn't even remember what it is, so it can't be that big.
Right.
I think it's recreation, energy, and historic cultural, thank you for that.
Lot of bravo.
And, and the land use, um, and the land use map, there's also a regulatory requirement.
Yes, but that would probably be in the tier one.
I was gonna say, it should be with this, no, this is land use.
Typically though, future land use comes after you do the rest of the chapters, because it takes into consideration everything.
All right, cool. Kelly, what's this look like for a, um, next steps, public hearing, so on and so forth?
Uh, so I, as far as I can tell, we've received and pretty much already incorporated your feedback.
Yep.
As long as you don't need to see it again.
Nope. And that's with, you know, the one line that we said, just send it to Jeff and I and we'll, we'll make a decision on behalf of the board and.
Sure.
Yeah.
So in terms of the, um, public hearing, I don't recall discussing a specific date, but, um, meeting at the steering committee, or you and I offline, um, but I, I can schedule it.
Can't remember, you and I might have talked about this.
I can go back and look.
Yeah.
And get back to you.
Did we discuss maybe the possibility of a special meeting for it? Is that something you and I discussed?
We talked about amendments at a special meeting, but.
Amendments at a special meeting, yeah, see, it's all coming, it's, everything's blind.
We can talk, I mean, we can put it on a regular meeting, um, I guess I'm putting the question back to you, is that what you want, or you want a special meeting?
You guys wanna keep it on one meeting or make it its own meeting? I know you guys love being here two times.
I think we can do it, you know, all the best fun, the interest of the public, which.
Well, that's, I, I'm trying to, for all of our sakes, I'm trying to consider that, and that's why I'm asking about, is it worth it?
I lean towards a special meeting, honestly, just because our agendas are so heavy.
That's what I mean.
I was, I was about to say, if we do one of these meetings.
Last week was like, uh, hasn't happened in five years, and it's not gonna happen for five more, so. I, you know, personally, I'd rather see this be one of your. I, you know, personally, I'd rather see this be one agenda item, so hopefully by nine twenty, we're finishing the night. Cause if, I, I feel as though if this is on something that has three site plans, we're just, none of us are gonna care about the time, I guess.
I'll look at some dates that this room is available and, um, we can pull the board on availability. Maybe we'll do a six PM start time.
Yep. That's fine. Um, if we could maybe aim for that, you know, third week in September, something like that. Third or fourth week in September.
Okay.
Wonderful. All right, Hop Grant, you're up.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thanks for Hop.
Okay.
Me too. Should, should've stood up sooner.
Thank you Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is James Vayo. I am principal planner of Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, and I'm here to talk to you about your Hop Grant. So you may or may not know that Invest NH, uh, put together a, a grant solicitation. It was about three million dollars and Londonderry was a happy recipient of it and, um,
Are you able to advance or no?
Uh, can't go backwards, that's the only thing, so. Do you want to? And, uh, was awarded a, a contract to, uh, to do work. That, that contract is administered by, uh, New Hampshire Housing and, uh, yours truly, Southern New Hampshire Planning Com- Commission is, uh, was the consultant selected by Londonderry. Londonderry to implement, uh, the contract, so, um.
How big is the Hop Grant?
Uh, in, in totality for, for I think it's a hundred thousand dollars.
No, we fifty, right?
Fifty thousand dollars. My apologies. And, uh, so, so the Housing Opportunity Grant, uh, is really intended to help towns refine their local regulations or create new regulations that will increase housing supply. So, um, so the scope in, in, uh, Londonderry reflects that. There's a couple of different tasks. There's this, uh, task to look at the zoning ordinance as it exists today. Uh, look at the subdivision regulations, site plan regulations, and other supplementary, uh, standards, and see how they affect the, the housing market in town. Then we, uh, there's also another task in the contract for comparing, uh, zoning regulations to uh, best practices, the local master plan, which you guys are updating right now, and, uh, probably quite importantly, uh, recent changes to the state law, which affect a lot of, every community in the state. A third task here is to look at, um, to identify and select housing strategies that align with local priorities. So I, you know, today, sitting here, listening to the conversation about housing strategies was enlightening in a lot of ways. And, uh, at the end of this mini presentation here, which will be very quick, uh, I'll have an ask for you around this strategy, uh, this selecting housing strategies. And then finally, when, uh, all these elements have been put together, we would go bury our books, uh, bury our noses in the books and go conduct the actual audit and review the zoning. We have been doing work so far. Uh, the first thing we did was sit down with town staff and have a conversation about their observations relative to housing barriers. We then followed that up with, um, a conversation with, uh, with a series of interviews of developers that are operating in the town. And so we put together a couple mini reports on that, identifying themes and observations. We also took, uh, a look at, uh, external forces acting on housing and Zach, uh, has done a, uh, an excellent job identifying and conveying those things to you, so. There's not much here that would be news to you on this bullet list. Basically, there's an aging demographic. There are in-migration patterns and high demand for housing in Londonderry. People are, um, especially people who don't already have a single-family home are suffering with housing cost burdens. Uh, economic conditions really, uh, favor Londonderry, uh, as a housing destination. Societal values really, in a lot of ways, define what housing looks like in our, in our communities, whether it's here or somewhere else in the state. And, uh, housing production, at least this was something that was emphasized a lot by New Hampshire Housing over the last couple of years, appears to be mismatched with, uh, household sizes. So, uh, a simple way to think of that would be, there's lots of one and two-person households that are in, you know, three and four-bedroom houses. Excuse me. So, and that's, really chocks up the progress to date, very quick and easy update for you guys. But now comes the hard part. I see you guys are very busy with the master plan, but I'm here to ask you guys to take on yet another task, which is to establish some kind of working committee so that, um, there can be a champion for the outcome of the housing audit. Without some kind of committee put together, uh, I think it would be a lot less likely that any material change would happen in the community, this, uh, because you guys wouldn't have a vested interest in it. And, and that's a personal opinion, but, um, it's one that I think is true. And so by putting together a steering committee, we can look at these barriers to housing and discuss them. We can look at housing strategies and identify the kind of housing that feels appropriate for Londonderry. That shouldn't be a me choice, that should be a you choice. And then once I know those things, I informs how I can audit your, uh, your land use regulations and your housing policy. Uh, and then at the end of that, we really need to determine a strategy for how to implement those regulatory revisions. That is, you know, is the planning board gonna make recommendations for the town to vote on? Uh, who's gonna carry that forward? It won't be me, so. With all that said, I don't know if, uh, how it would function, but I'm looking for a group that would be willing to meet with me periodically.
Kelly, can it just be a working session for the planning board?
Yeah.
I, I think it can, and you can see why, I've, I've said it a few times through the master plan process, this kind of mirrors what we're doing at master plan, obviously. So, you, I mean, you don't have to have a, a steering committee formally, at least not in my view. You could, I guess it's your choice.
I, I would say leave it with the board.
A hundred percent. Everybody good with that?
May I also suggest, um, one of the things that, uh, James also did was, he, and I think he mentioned it, me, he met with several developers and that feedback is, is very interesting. Um, I, I think that has been provided to staff, correct?
James, who'd you meet with?
I, um, in the report intentionally did not, uh, identify the developers so that they would be candid with their input. And so, uh, you guys know the developers are all developers that are currently or recently active in your town. And if you read through the report, you guys have intimate knowledge, you probably know who they are, but
Staff provided some
Specific to the town of Londonderry.
Some recommendations.
Perfect. That's what I was getting at.
It'd be great to review that in a work session, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, if you could let the cat out of the bag, what, what are some possible things that could come out of your investigation that could cause buildings slash development to change in Londonderry?
Well, that, that's highly dependent on what kind of housing you wanna see.
I don't think we can say yet.
The, the thing I heard, uh, because I did attend, was a, a master plan, I attended one of the master plan meetings and, uh, the thing I heard out loud was a lot of resentment towards large-scale residential development and that it doesn't look like the Londonderry I wanna see. And so if, if that is in fact the, the sort of air, air of public opinion on, uh, housing, then as a strategy, we should identify things that, that allow you to grow that don't have to look like that.
How would you do, but, so what, based on your training and experience, what, what are some, let's use that scenario, what are some possible methods and methodologies that, that a town, any town could use to accomplish that? Because, and, and I say that because, you know, everybody throws around affordable housing, right? And, and no one knows that, there's no definition for that in New Hampshire. There's no RSA, there's no, there's no anything that, that defines what affordable housing is, right? Because we have a supply and demand, we have supply and demand housing in New Hampshire. So, but, but based on your training and, and, and experience, what, what possible things just in general could a town do to, to, to change, uh, to not, to not have large-scale developments?
Yeah, yeah, there, there's actually a really good assortment of resources available for this. Uh, some from planning assoc- uh, the, the National Planning Association called the APA. Uh, American Planners Association has some really good guidance on this. Uh, some independent, uh, nonprofit housing, uh, institutions like, uh, localhousingsolutions.org has really good resources for this. And some of them are physical recommendations, like how to shape or frame your policy so that you get smaller lots or lots that don't cost as much to build. Uh, others are, have to do with the physical shape of the building. Yet others have to do with the financing structure or the policy that would, that would in, uh, that would influence the financing structure. So, uh, there's lots of different ways to tackle it, uh, you know. What I would like to do with a working group is look at some of these policy documents together, actually send them to you in advance, have you guys read through them, come with a formulated opinion of what you see in there, whether you like it or not, and then share your opinion amongst a small group about why this policy or that policy makes sense or, or I don't wanna see this. You know, what, what I'm not gonna do is give you my opinion of what's right for Londonderry.
Well, I didn't, and I didn't ask you that, that's why I said, eh, for any town, but not, not, I'm not Londonderry. But if somebody in, in Londonderry buys a, a fifty-acre parcel of land, we, we don't have, um, lot size requirements anymore, do we? It's depend, depending on his and, and, and wells, right? Yes, so, so if it's, so if it's, and if it's, and if it's, um, municipal water and sewer, then it, then it is what it is, um, other than setbacks.
Or smaller.
Yeah, other than, other than setbacks. So, so when someone buys a piece of land, they're gonna, they're gonna try and get the most amount of money that they can from it. They're not gonna build a cottage because, because builders work on a percentage. Each home that they build, they're gonna, let's make up a number, they're gonna make, uh, ten percent on the house. So, do they, are they gonna build a house that's seven million dollars to get ten percent from that piece of land? Or are they gonna build a hundred thousand dollar house and get ten percent of that land? Then the question is, wh- what, what's the number, what, what's the financial number that houses are selling for? And that's, that's how the developer figures out what they're gonna do or what they're not gonna do, right? By the South Fire Station right now, um, in town on whatever the road is. Thank you. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for seventeen hundred square feet, new construction, on a major state road, one oh two, that you hear, I was in there today, and I turned off my car and I, and I, and I sat on a piece of granite and I just listened. It was really loud and they're selling. So, what does it, what does a town do? What is a, what is a land planning, uh, uh, board do to, to mitigate that? To, to help the citizenry have, uh, houses uh, that a different demographic can buy? I'm not gonna say affordable housing because clearly nine fifty is, is affordable because they're selling. There's, there's two houses, people were moving in, I don't even know how that, I don't even know how they were moving in. That's a whole other, other thing, I didn't say that. Um, but, but, so it's, so nine fifty is affordable for a seventeen hundred square foot because they're, they're selling. So what does a town do? Any town, USA, New Hampshire.
Yeah, I, I mean, well, well, Londonderry's in you, uh, kind of a unique position in that it has a higher, highly desirable location. And, uh, to some extent, you know, the demand and the price of your homes are gonna be set by that location. Now, you can implement policies around, uh, capital A affordable housing, which, you know, require certain units be affordable to a residence at eighty percent of the area median income.
But the developer, but the developer gets paid by someone else to make up the difference, to build that affordable Yeah. Or, or bonuses for density.
And I would say, you know, uppercase, uh, you know, capital A affordable housing, uh, in scale, if you, if you look at any, any town, in scale, never solves the housing problem because it always requires some form of a subsidy, whether it's monetary or a policy subsidy, uh, that's pushed on to the developer.
Are you talking about workforce housing? Are you talking about a different kind of, when you say capital A affordable housing?
Well, then there's naturally occurring affordable housing, uh, which may not feel like it, but, you know, if you build enough of it, you can, you can catch it.
No, I, I, I'm saying, so per state statute, I'm thinking of, uh, the, the workforce housing regulations. When you say the eighty percent, are you, are you meaning workforce housing instead of affordable housing?
Yeah, sorry, my apologies.
Just wanted to be clear.
Where affordable is thirty percent of the housing costs, you, yeah. It's that thirty percent rule.
I just wanna make a distinction because there's no definition in state statute, which is part of the problem of us, when we talk about affordable housing, people are like, well, what's affordable?
Yeah, it depends on the household, yeah. That's, that's a good distinction, I'm glad you made that, I'm sorry, my apologies.
No, no problem.
Yeah, so I got, I guess, you know, we can go around in circles. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where we're gonna go with, with what it is you're gonna do. I'm trying to get a preview of what could possibly be the result.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, really, it's feed, feed the group resources and talk about those resources and identify what resonates with, uh, the members. You know, one, one thing I would suggest is, uh, whatever the working group is, it would be valuable to have insight from, uh, people maybe in different perspectives, like perhaps someone from the zoning board, uh, or even perhaps someone who doesn't own a home in the town, but maybe lived their whole lives and want to own a home in town, so that they can share their viewpoints on things. Uh, and that would just ensure that whatever policy is derived, at least you've heard, uh, you know, some of the challenges or viewpoints that might not be reflected, uh, by the makeup of the board, so.
You know, one thing that this board's already talked about is implementation of land use and housing chapters that we just discussed. This could just trigger that implementation plan, which makes me, you've already gotten some recommendations from the master plan subcommittee to focus on what we just talked about, the pork chop lots and, and smaller lots and uh, small, small home allowances. So, I mean, it was all, that's what we heard, that feedback was all keeping it small. And so that could be an area where James could find those examples, um, whether that's in New Hampshire or in New England, and provide that to the board.
So I'll, uh, you know, just throw it out there, so whatever group is gonna be formed, I'm willing to be on that group. I'd like to be on that group, um, but if you have other plans, that's fine, too.
I wanna keep it right here.
That's fine.
I wanna keep it right here because I think it plays into everything we're doing right now.
You still want me on the group?
Give us the planning board.
Yeah. If it's okay. If it's okay.
I'd love to have you.
All right. Appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
I think Sylvia said you kind of dovetails in what we want to do for implementation, so.
Yeah.
That's where we could work together.
I think this helps us, this could help us narrow what we need to do in order to implement a successful strategy for what we're trying to achieve through our master plan. So you're looking at your committee?
The, the whole planning board?
You heard it.
Yep, you got it. Nothing better than that.
Now, can we give James some direction? Shall he take a look at those recommendations from the master plan that we just talked about?
We, we would certainly take that into account. The first thing you said want to start, well, of course, we have the work we've done with the interviews, discussion with staff. But really, in order to start the audit process, I really need to understand where they want to land.
Where this board wants to land.
On, on, on housing, on housing strategies. You know, what looks appropriate and what doesn't. And, uh, because that will really inform what to look for in, in the, the, the land use regulations.
So I think, I feel like a lot plays into that. I think you touched on it earlier, um, on what you had heard at either a master plan meeting or, or what have you. I don't think density is the issue. People are mixing up density in the way something looks. I think that if there's 100 units in a condo building, people have a problem with it. But if there's 100 houses on a quarter acre lot, nobody has a problem with it. So, how do you get there? To his point, what is affordability? I think we need to look at that differently. I've said it many times now. I think affordability needs to be looked at as, is there a way to, it, it's not a number. It, in my eyes is, is there a way to create a zone where we can build houses in Lunen Derry that are going for what, less than what the market rate is for a new house? We've created affordability in my eyes. Again, it's not a number, but you're saying houses are going for $950,000. If we can find a way to make a, a unique zone or, or what have you that makes it that these houses are less than $950,000, we created affordability.
So, what you're saying is we'd need to create a zone that allowed a developer to build a home cheaper than anywhere else in town.
Correct.
In this one, one spot.
And that's through.
And it's going to be cheaper because this rule will be relaxed and that rule will be relaxed and we're gonna change that and we're gonna do this and that.
It's through density and, you know, are there ways to look at it where?
That makes sense.
I'm, I'm really kind of talking from the hip right now, but are, is there ways to, it costs an arm and a leg for infrastructure, so is there a way to do it without bringing sewer and water and, and allowing a denser development? You know, that'll save you a million bucks in a subdivision real quick. Um, you know, is it a more relaxed roadway standard? I have no idea.
Community wells.
I think, exactly. That I think is what needs to be looked at, is how, how do these houses begin to share a little bit more of the burden of building than doing things like.
Would they have to mean median income for this? Like would they, would it have to be like?
No, it's not.
Based off of what?
No.
So, just, you know, devil's advocate here, my wife and I arguably don't. But let's say we do $750,000, I can go buy an affordable house?
Well, so this is what I'm getting at. We have to, the people, I, I think that we need to look at affordability different. Today, a new construction house in Lunen Derry is going for $950,000.
Yeah, but what's the square footage of the home? That's the one thing that you can keep that.
1,700.
But this is what I'm saying is can we find a way in today's market, not tomorrow's market because it'll be different, but could we theoretically find a way in today's market to, to increase density by limiting the size in the bedrooms in the houses? So you're not going to get, you're not going to give them density and then they're going to put a million dollar house up with five bedrooms in it. Okay, now they put up a two bedroom house and it's only 1,000 or 1,100 square feet. It's not going to sell for 950 grand. We've created affordability. I don't know what that number is, but it's less than a 950.
So our, our idea of affordability is exactly that, affordability in the price of the home, not in the person who purchases it? Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what I wanted to hear. That's, that's how I was getting at.
Yep.
Beautiful.
So I, I. If I could, uh, you know, I think that's actually direction for James is that you're saying, are there mechanisms out there?
Yeah.
That allow for a cheaper priced product?
Correct.
And, you know, the next, I guess, pat, piece of that is, I don't know that there's anything that restricts it from being a more affordable priced product forever because the next time that those people go to sell it. But there are probably.
Absolutely.
It's probably on the first step where you're saying, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Developer, we're going to give you a, some sort of bonus, whatever it is. A density bonus, uh, whatever bonus, a reduction in, in, a lot, whatever, whatever the bonus is, that allows you to deliver a product at 10% under market. And you can only get this additional bonus, this other bogey, if you do this. And then that gets written into, say, their approval process.
I want to be careful about using the word bonus though, because if we use the word bonus, some are going to hear that.
Then use something else. But you gotta, you gotta find a way.
Yes, yeah.
To allow for that first transaction to be below market by, by beating the natural economic.
Yes.
Process.
And I think what, what Jake outlined is there, there's definitely ways to do that where you can have smaller square footage or other.
Has to be.
Yeah, capacity.
It's funny because I thought 1,700 square feet was small. Think about it. 1,700 square feet. $950,000.
I mean, for a lot of the houses that are built now, that is. You know, I mean, you, you look at a lot of the developments in town, they're 3,000 square feet.
So I think you kind of got some direction there that.
There's got to be a way to do it.
Look at the size of houses that were built 50, 60 years ago. And, uh, I mean, those, those sold, and, and look at the size of them to what they're building now for size.
I mean, even if you look at the.
All that space needed.
Right, right, exactly. Even when you look at the.
Go ahead.
What's your view on affordability? Is it the cost of the home or the person coming into it?
Uh, well, it, it really depends on how you're asking it, right? There's, there's income restrictions which are different than affordability, which Sean clarified. You know, affordability is, that, that measure of 30% of a person's income is, I think, a pretty good bellwether. Uh, you know, I think back to when I bought my first house and I was probably a little over that and that made me pretty uneasy. But, you know, I've come a long way over the years and things are a lot easier now, but for a lot of people, they're spending over, well over a number, we, we know from the data that a lot of people are spending more than 50% of their income on housing in Lunen Derry, you know?
So let, let me, and, in terms of this here, right? So, part of, and, and, part of, uh, this is making sure that like our housing strategy and zoning and everything kind of aligns with what the state has, correct?
That will be a part of the audit, yes.
And, and let's say that, and you've got here identify local barriers and stuff like that. So let's say that the town, you know, you, you talk to people in town, you talk, and the town says, well, we don't want this stuff that is going to help alleviate. And I'm, I'm not saying just Lunen Derry, but you probably experienced this and pretty much. No town goes, yeah, we want massive, you know, no small town goes, we want massive housing developments, right? So how do you balance that with the state needs X amount of housing mix? And the towns are like, no, we, we don't want to build that.
Well, you, you'll be glad to hear that. Well, we do this, this is a part of a housing needs assessment. It's a regional exercise and we do it every couple of years. And, uh, it's, what you're referring to is called fair share distribution and, um.
Which there's another just.
Well, let, let me finish because you'll like the answer to this, which is that Lunen Derry meets its fair share distribution of housing. Meaning it buil, it builds enough housing to carry its weight in the region.
Just not the affordable aspect of that. It has enough diversity, it has enough housing according to the fair share, but not enough affordable. And you're back at that.
Well, we must be because the houses are selling, so they are affordable.
Yeah.
Yeah, affordable.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
Does the audit also?
No matter what you say, that's, it all comes down to that.
Well, I mean, affordable is somebody from Mass who moves up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on guys. Does the housing audit, does that also kind of look at future demographic trends like, you know, like, so say if you're a house, you have five bedrooms. We know that, um, birth rates have been declining, they've been declining for over 20 years. You're seeing that all over. I mean, I think there was, what, families were only having a .6 child, so someone's losing an arm or something.
That's what happened to me.
It was .6.
But that might be kind of a good, like, data point to kind of say, are the houses too big?
Well, I mean.
Right, so, right, right, from a.
The houses are definitely too big, uh, if, if you think about it on basic needs. Now, you know, we're all entitled to live in the house we want to live in, uh, in a capitalist society and, uh, so if you do well and you want to live in a huge house, there's, that's your prerogative. I would say that there are good strategies to backfill for somebody that might be struggling to cover their housing costs. You know, this is not a physical change, but there's things like co-housing or house sharing. People can choose to live with other people and in some communities, um, there are services that help connect homeowners with renters. So, that could be something through policy that the town could support if they were interested in that.
I don't know that anybody in the town's looking for co-sharing, so we can just cross that off.
Right. And I was just more or less thinking, you know, you have, obviously what's there, the inventory that's there now is what's going to be there, but like for future, if you're, yeah, I'm just looking.
Another way to think of it is, you know, as, as people.
If demographic, if the demographic, if families are smaller, are they going to want a, you know, four, five bedroom home?
There will come, there will come a time in the future when a large house will not be the desirable housing type in the market.
And I kind of, from a planning standpoint, that's the data point that I'm, that I would be focused, what's the future? You know, like what's the long-term plan there? Like where's, where is that, where's that intersection? So that's where, you know, kind of as we kind of move, go forward through this process, that's where I would probably be most interested in looking at.
I, I don't, I, you know, I can look for resources for that, but I don't, I can't look into a crystal ball and know with any kind of definitive answer what that will be other than.
Well, no one can, but you can look at, you know, kind of research and trends and.
Yeah, you could look, look at when the, the, the big bulk of population that's aging now.
And have a strategic foresight to kind of look at it.
You know, that will be the time when housing becomes slack.
I, I will offer the fact that, that it's already a fact that the current housing is being used differently than people of my generation use the home.
Yes.
And not only that, but I have personally seen that people are looking for a larger home because mom works from home and one of the bedrooms is her office. And dad works from home and one of the, the other bedrooms is his office. And they have a child, so now they, they need a five bedroom home. But the word bedroom is not how the houses are being used nowadays.
Right.
Well, and, and not just that, but it becomes suspicious cycle. It's, you, you, you can't afford a house or an apartment, so you live with your parents, which means that the parents are no longer downsizing because they've got kids in their twenties that live at home because they can't afford to go somewhere else.
Just, just like Winth, just like Winthrop.
Too much in the weeds here.
Winthrop's been doing that for 100 years, I think.
House rich, money poor, right? But I upsized so I could take care of my parents. Probably one of the last generations that'll do it, but I upsized so I could take on the burden, the, you know, instead of putting my, if I can benefit from having my parents with me as we grow older.
Sure.
I have the room for them, so I bought a bigger house for that reason. That and because I just love wasting money, but that was the main.
You know, I just want to bring.
I plan on in the next 10 years, I'd probably have between two and four parents in my house from my, and my wife's side of the family. I already have one.
Yeah, I just want to bring out one other thing up too, and Jeff, I heard you that we think we're getting too much in the weeds and I agree with that, but, the product has changed too. So, you know, back in the late eighties, early nineties, we were s- the builders were building small unfinished up capes with four mica countertops and lino and basic carpet and basic appliances.
Now we want a quartzite.
And now everybody wants chrome.
Quartzite black spash.
Yeah, this and that and the other thing. So the consumer's changed too. So we can put it all on us and say, or the market or whatever, but the consumer's demanding more and it just, that turns that.
Supply and demand.
Well, it turns that price in from a $500,000 home to a $950,000 home.
Exactly.
But the other thing is if we build, if we say, let's say we would do this, when, not, but if they built houses that had the four mica countertops and a shag carpet and everything, all you're going to do is get someone that buys it for cheap, puts in stainless steel appliances and, and granite countertops and then sells it for double. But we're never going to control what happens on the second day.
Right, I think some of the things are kind of.
I think, I, I think a good thing to look at, that I, I've said it probably a million times now, you're all probably tired of hearing it. I, I would recommend looking at something like what's going on in Pillsbury right now with these smaller homes. And I am confident that if we could find a way to make that work, we could create a more affordable house in the town of Lunen Derry. Confident.
Cottage houses.
Yep.
Yep.
And the, the other, other aspect, I think a while back, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal on houses that are pre-manufactured, they're much cheaper than, you know, the stick construction that goes on. So you buy a house that's already manufactured, it's already shipped in two or three pieces.
Right.
It's put together on a certain foundation size and it only comes one, one way. I mean, of course you can add what you want to it, but that would be at your expense.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd reduce some of the housing costs, probably even cut it in half.
Do you feel like you have some marching orders?
I, uh, yeah, absolutely. I, I think the big question, I can work it out with Kelly, is, uh, when can I give you guys homework and then I'll discuss.
We'll see you real soon. I think we just gave you homework. Didn't we just give you homework?
It won't take me long to get back to you guys, but you'll have some reading materials pretty soon.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Sylvia, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate the presentation. Thank you. All right, anything else, folks?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, before you do that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go on record saying that we had several, um, opportunities for the public to, uh, speak in public format and there was nobody here to do that. Uh, but the opportunity did arise on several occasions and I would like that to be in the record. Thank you.
Fantastic. Mr. Vice Chair, you are on a motion, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks.